Good evening, good evening and welcome to the Town of Garner Town Council Regular Meeting, April 16th, and we're off to a good start. We have some great citizens here to participate with us this evening. Always glad to see the citizens involved. We have some very special guests that we'll introduce in a little more detail in just a few minutes, and I want to give a big shout out to some kids who were here earlier today. I'll call them kids who are only seventeen and eighteen, out of two high schools, South Garner and Garner Magnet School. They have a program called Young Leadership, and they came here for a mock town council meeting, and they just did a great job and brought a level of excitement that I was glad to see. So, we're all riding high this evening on good news. And with that, the meeting's called to order, and we will start with a roll call from our town clerk.
Singleton?
Here.
Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Member Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
I'm going to ask Councilmember Dellinger to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation.
Stand and pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to both for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me if you wish. We are thankful for this day that you've given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate news each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Daniel, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. We go through them in a particular order. We start with petitions and comments, and this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included on the agenda here. There are matters that are germane to town policies or business and subjects within the town's apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or groups, spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. We are interested in hearing your concerns, may not take action or deliberate on each subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials. And I ask our town attorney, have we had anyone signed up to speak at this part?
No, sir.
Okay, well, that was easy enough. We'll move right along to adoption of agenda. You've picked them up, our council members have these. I'll ask my council members, is there a motion and a second?
A move?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of adopting the current agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, and it's unanimous, that passes. We'll push ahead, and the very first item on the agenda are some special presentations, and if you just look around, you might can guess who the two most special guests are by their tiaras, not crowns, their tiaras, I've been instructed. I'm going to ask Kyle Ring, the Executive Director of the Pageant Program, to give us a little introduction, tell us a little something about your program, and then introduce our special guest, if you would, Kyle.
My name's Kyle Ring, I'm the local director of the Miss Garner Organization. Thank you.
You can stand at that podium or this podium, wherever you like.
Gotcha. Kyle Ring, local director of the Miss Garner Organization. We are, just celebrated our sixty-sixth year, Miss Garner and Miss Garner's team, and so we have the privilege of having Abby Britt, our Miss Garner, and our Miss Garner's team, Colleen McDermott. So, we'd also like to thank the town and also the Town Parks and Recreation of Garner for all your continued support past years. This past year, we did lose Harold Garner, who was with us for many, many years, and so big shoes to step into, but looking forward to continuing the legacy of Miss Garner Organization. So with that, I'll have Colleen McDermott come up and talk about her community service initiative.
Colleen, you might want to speak in that one where everyone can see you and hear you just as well.
Okay, okay.
So step up close and let's hear what you have.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, as well as Miss Garner, Abby Britt. We're so excited to be here and have this opportunity, and I just want to express my gratitude to all of you. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Colleen McDermott. I'm seventeen years old. I'm a junior at Cardinal Gibbons High School, and I'm also the current Miss Garner's team. So, a little bit about my background in the Miss America's Teen Program. I grew up a competitive Irish dancer. I've been competing in Irish dance my entire life, competing internationally in Scotland, Ireland, and England, but I really wanted to expand myself and become a more well-rounded human being, and I saw other Irish dancers in other states competing in the Miss America's Teen Program, and I decided to give it a shot. I competed my first year as Miss Moore County's Outstanding Teen and placed in the top ten at Miss North Carolina's Teen, came back my second year, competed as Madison County's Teen, and placed first runner-up to our now Miss America's Teen, Hanley House, and now I have the privilege of going as Miss Garner's Teen to Miss North Carolina's Teen in June, and I'm very, very excited. Hopefully, I can bring home the title to Garner. That would be a big, big blessing. But a little bit about what I've been able to do this year as Miss Garner's Teen. I've been able to do a lot of community events. I was able to visit Miss Garner Senior Center. I was able to do an Irish dance performance for them there for their St. Patrick's Day celebration. Along with that, I was able to go to Garner's Got Talent, and that was one of my favorite appearances, just getting to see all the talented members of the Garner community. I've also been able to go to a lot of classrooms this year. A big thing for me is service. My community service initiative is Planet Youth. It's all about educating our youth on the environment and making sure that they have the tools to do so. So I do that through three key action points: service, education, and awareness. Through service, I have my own CRAN recycling initiative. I've recycled over ten thousand CRANS from all across the state of North Carolina for recycling and donation to children's hospitals. And then I also have two partnerships, the TerraCycle and CRAN Initiative Organization that I'm working on currently. I'm also a registered nonprofit in the state of North Carolina, which is really exciting. That's a new thing for me. And then through the action point of service, I have, obviously, my CRAN Initiative Organization, but I also have my Beauty Cycle Initiative, which I just started, where I'm recycling makeup products from across North Carolina to be redistributed into new products. So that is something that I'm working on right now in the Town of Garner. Through the point of awareness, I have my Green Teens Podcast. That's where I interview other teens, making the difference for the environment, to hopefully inspire others to take action, and that's something that I've really had a lot of excitement for. I get to really connect to the teen audience. Podcast's a really big thing right now, and I even have national and international listeners, which is so exciting. One of the biggest things for me is my children's book, and that is through the point of education. I am a self-written and illustrated author of my children's book, Love Earth, and there's also a coloring book version, and I've been able to read it to over fifty classrooms across Garner in the state of North Carolina. I've been able to go to a few classrooms this year. I'm hoping to go to a few more before Miss North Carolina's Teen in the end of my year, but having that tool to educate others on the environment is so crucial to me. So, for the rest of the year, obviously, I'm preparing for Miss North Carolina's Teen, but in general, I'm just looking to spread my community service initiative as much as possible, especially during Earth Month. I'm sending out free copies of my children's book across the state of Garner and North Carolina. So, I'm very, very excited to keep working as Miss Garner's Teen. I love being a role model for our youth and getting to be that pioneer for change through Planet Youth, but also just setting an example, and I'm very, very thankful for all of your support, and I want to thank you all again for everything you're doing for me, Miss Garner, and just the Garner community in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was not that well-spoken when I was her age, so it's really wonderful to be here. I'm Abby Britt, and I have the privilege of serving as Miss Garner 2024. A little bit about my background. This was not my first opportunity to compete for Miss Garner. My journey to become Miss Garner actually began in 2017, when I competed for the title of Miss Garner 2018, at twenty-one years old. And at that competition, while I did not walk away with a crown, I did walk away as the first runner-up, a love for this community, and the woman who won Miss Garner that year is now my best friend, so I totally won that night. I have been competing in the Miss North Carolina Organization and the Miss America Opportunity for the past eight years, and I have earned scholarship dollars that have changed my life. Miss America is the leading scholarship provider for women in the nation and arguably in the world. I have been able to pay back all of my undergraduate student debt, as well as pay for my master's in full, so I am twenty-seven years old and have no student loan debt, which has changed my life and changed the financial trajectory of my life. I graduated from UNC Chapel Hill in 2019 with a Bachelor's of Science in Radiology Science, and currently work at Duke University Hospital in Interventional Radiology. I just finished my MBA concentrating in healthcare management through UNC Wilmington, and I'm excited to potentially move into hospital leadership at some point in my career. I'm also applying for a Physicians Assistant Program coming up at the end of the month, so fingers crossed that works out. So, my community service initiative is very important to me, and I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity as Miss Garner to pick something in the community that means so much to me and that I want to advocate for. My community service initiative is entitled "Give It a Shot: Promoting Science Hands-on Training," and it's all about getting kids excited about science at an early age through the use of hands-on activities. Yes, I have had the opportunity to travel across the state of North Carolina, leading science discussions, demonstrations, and experiment activities. I have worked with over three thousand students, both in classrooms and youth programs and online. So, I'm incredibly grateful that even through the pandemic, I was able to engage students with engaging learning opportunities that they might not have been able to have gotten while they were at home learning virtually. We've seen that COVID-19 has caused a lot of issues in the classroom with getting kids back up to speed, so I'm really excited to be partnering with educators, as well as the American Heart Association, STEM Goes Red, to advocate for science education and to ensure that all students have an opportunity to study science in college if they so choose. Just one more quick highlight for me. The Miss America Opportunity not only provides scholarship opportunities, I secured a job three months before I graduated from school, thanks to the interview skills that I gained. I'm a much better public speaker than I was so many years ago, and also just to have a newfound confidence in who I am and what I have to offer. This will be my seventh time competing for the job of Miss North Carolina. Along with Colleen, I was the first runner-up to Miss North Carolina last year, also the first runner-up in 2022. Going from being that twenty-year-old who was competing in a class with a soon-to-be Miss America, multiple Miss North Carolinas, to being the woman that I aspired to be at that age has really, really changed my life, and I'm incredibly grateful. I'm thankful to the Town of Garner. I'm grateful to all of you, as well as to Kyle Ring, for continuing on the legacy of Miss Garner, and Colleen and I both hope to make the Town of Garner so, so proud in June. So, thank you so much for having us.
Great, thank you. Photo op, photo op. Oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness. That was certainly worth taking a couple of extra minutes, wasn't it? Who knew they'd do all that stuff? You don't believe it until you hear it. At this point, let's see, we're moving along to a proclamation. It has to do with Building Safety Month, and I was told that Mr. Pageant, our inspections director, may be here, and would you like to share some words with us, Paul? Because I do have the proclamation, and I can come down there and stand beside you and read it after you get finished with your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, guests. Thank you for supporting Building Safety Month in our planning, inspections, and engineering departments. The staff is vital to creating and maintaining a safe-built environment here in Garner. The 2024 Building Safety Month theme is "Mission Possible." Building Safety Month is an international campaign held each May to raise awareness about building safety. This campaign reinforces the need to adopt modern, regularly updated building codes, and helps individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. All communities need building codes and ordinances to protect their residents from disasters like fire, weather-related events, and structural collapse. These building code-relevant ordinances are the best way to protect our homes, our offices, our schools, manufacturing facilities, stores, and entertainment venues that we use each day. Our staff work daily to keep our residents, guests, and building owners safe. In 2023, the planning, inspections, and engineering staff played a role in issuing 2,596 permits. Of those, twenty-seven were multifamily apartments, four hundred and fourteen were townhomes, and six hundred and thirty-nine were single-family dwellings. We also issued nine hundred and fifty-eight new certificates of occupancies, bringing new residents to Garner. Staff also completed forty-eight thousand one hundred and thirteen inspections related to the permitting process. We completed seventeen hundred and sixty-nine fire inspections and worked a thousand and thirty-five code compliance cases. During the month of May, we're going to have weekly topics that include understanding the mission, preparing a building safety plan, engaging your community, and celebrating success in building safety. We plan to work with Rick and the PIO Office to help get these messages out to our residents through social media like we did last year. Myself and our staff would like to thank you for the continued support in regards to Building Safety Month.
Mr. Pageant, if you could stand by just a minute, I'd like to read the proclamation and come down and bestow it upon you there. Paul is one of hundreds of town employees who often get overlooked. They don't have the glamour jobs, but they're the ones who keep us safe, keep the wheels turning. They're the ones that are out there doing the work day after day after day to get results that we take for granted, like safety and secure buildings. With that being said, this is a proclamation naming May of 2024 Building Safety Month, and it's where as the Town of Garner is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role that our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Whereas our confidence and resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of these vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas the International Code Council sponsors Building Safety Month to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas "Mission Possible," the theme of Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale, and whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider a commitment to improving building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities, and you'll be hearing more about those to come. I'd like to present this to you, Paul. Ask this along to your staff, who does their share of the work, and our thanks to all of them. Big round for Paul and his team. Who's supposed to come up here with Paul? Get up here. Get up here. Well, nothing but good news so far, and now for something almost as exciting, the consent agenda. These are items that have been talked about and studied by the council and by staff. They've been consolidated into one particular document here for one particular action. Most of these are fairly routine items. If no council member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda, I will ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, I believe that was Mr. Matthews made the motion, and Ms. Behringer seconded. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Hearing none is unanimous, that passes. Thank you very much, Council, for your diligence in studying this stuff. And now to what some of you came for, a couple of public hearings. These are different than some of the routine actions that we take. We're glad that you're here. I will let you know that these public hearings on tonight's agenda for rezonings and map amendments are legislative hearings which do not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a report, followed by the applicant, and then persons supporting or opposing the application will be recognized to speak. Council requests that groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group to kind of eliminate redundancy. And I'll just add one other comment before we jump into the two different public hearings. We really appreciate everyone coming. We do want the input of all the citizens. We've received a number of communications. There's been a number of community meetings. Your input is very, very important. We've also tried to streamline this a little bit. We're kind of still experimenting with the three-minute suggested time limit. We're not going to have the police throw you out if you go over three minutes. We don't pull a trapdoor to let you fall into the dungeon or anything at all if you go over the three minutes. But it's a suggestion for the three-minute limit. And if you have the same thing to say as the last four people before you, maybe just appoint them to speak for you. But we do want your input. With that, we'll move along to the very first public hearing. Both of these public hearings were continued from approximately a month ago at a council meeting because of the complexity and council's desire to get more information and more chance to refine some of these. So Ms. Jones is our first applicant here.
I believe Mr. Trezenberg will make the staff presentation.
Okay, okay, we'll start with the 1306 Creech Road. Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, will give us the background condition, and having given us the very detailed one previously, will let you give us a Reader's Digest version or just as deep as you want to go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. Yes, I just intended to briefly highlight what has changed as far as responses to some of the things that were brought up already at the first meeting, but then to turn it over to the, give you a little more in-depth discussion of where they are at. When you do go to the master plan in response to staff's review of the plans to the comprehensive plan, the applicant has made some minor modifications based on some of that feedback, as well as some of the feedback they received from you all last time. The first one was up here at the corner of Jewel and Creech Road, the non-residential building. They did go back and enhance the pedestrian areas around it with calling out some ornamental plantings, as well as making a direct connection and enhancement to the public right-of-way along Creech Road leading to the plaza area in front of the building. The suggestion of council, this open space previously in the northwest corner of the site was converted from just an open space area to actually being the formal dog park location. And then near the main amenity, the dog park was originally located here. That has now become a formal playground space and a connection. There is an accessible route to the public greenway over here, but they also added a stairwell connection, direct link between the clubhouse and the public greenway here. I do have this amended plan up. Like I say, it's not, it's in the details. The larger parts of it still largely remain the same. The applicant is here to provide you with a little more information as to the work that they've been doing since this was last before you.
Thank you, and we'll call on the applicant to make a presentation for us as well. If you would please introduce yourself, name and address, and we'd be glad to hear what you, and that'll be a fine place right there if you like.
Would you rather me go there? Jeff, can I do slides from here?
We'll let Jeff be your backup over there.
I'll probably need it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Isabel Maddox. I'm a lawyer, and my address is 3700 Glenwood Avenue, Suite 500 Raleigh, 27612. I'm here today representing CR 1306 and Zero LLC, the prospective developer of this project. And here with me tonight are our civil engineer, Beth Blackman, transportation engineer, Jeff Hocknagle, and our client, Steve De La Salla, Angelino Cordellano, and Joe Pirano. And I will explain that my predecessor, Randy Herman, he took a job in-house, and so he closed his private practice down, and he handed this off to me. So that's why I'm here and he's not here. And I'm happy to be back in Garner. I've appeared here many times, but not real recently. And so I'm pleased to be here, as, and I'm hoping that I can do these slides adequately. Jeff, do I just, tell me, do I, to advance the slides?
To the right.
To the right, okay. So bear with me, I'm not the most technologically savvy person ever. So, okay, just generally, an overview, you can see sort of a, onto the left side of a general map with the creek running through the back of the site, and then you see the site outlined in yellow, which is a big tract with several lots on the frontage of Creech and Jewel Street. So the request is for multifamily B and commercial mixed use for 5,000 feet, 312 residential units, that's 288 apartments and 24 townhomes. We are maintaining over half the site as open space with 18% tree preservation area. So we think there's some strong environmental commitments here. Have put in significant recreational amenities, clubhouse, pool, playground, dog park, public greenway. And the playground, as you heard, was added at council's request from the last meeting. There are going to be left-turn lanes added to Creech, and the traffic study that has been done in, scoped out with, you know, NC DOT, Creech Road is an NC DOT road. So the transportation study is, you know, the process as you go to DOT, they scope out what they want you to study, go to Town of Garner, they do the same thing. And so our engineers have done that in accordance with those two governmental authorities. And all the intersections nearby rate out as level of service C or better, which is actually pretty good for a growing area. We have had four neighborhood meetings, including one approximately two or three weeks ago, where we did have neighbors attend and gave us some good input. And we think we're going to be very responsive to some of their comments. Again, that's the site plan. So why is this, does this development make sense? Mostly apartments, okay? It adds to the housing stock. We, you know, a statistic that I'm sure you've heard a lot is that 62 people a day are moving into Wake County, and some of those are moving to Garner. There's a great deficit in housing units in our area, and we need to increase those. Apartments are more efficient, so you could put a single-family houses here, but it would, you know, have a larger amount of land dedicated to each residential unit. So apartments are more efficient in terms of how much land area they take, how much impervious coverage they create per unit, the utility cost per unit, the environmental impacts per unit. Apartments will attract young people to Garner, which is always something that you want to do to keep the vitality of the town, to keep growing and keep attracting new businesses, jobs, new restaurants, fun things to do. Most people have lived in an apartment at some point in their lives, either as students, as young singles, couples, young families, empty nesters. They really serve a lot of different people at different stages of life. You know, single-family homes are great, but they're not for everybody. They don't fit everybody's budget. Renting an apartment is the most cost-effective way to live. It allows time for younger people to, you know, grow their nest egg so that maybe someday they can afford a single-family home. It also allows people to downsize and get rid of the yard work and move into a multifamily community. It provides community, so people, they have a community center, they have a playground, they can meet other families, and they have social events there. It's, you know, it's a real great way of community building. Here, we have also significant open space preserved, and there will be some, a small amount of commercial space that will provide some sort of service, medical office possibly, or some sort of, you know, professional service available to the tenants of that thing and the community at large. These are some illustrative concept sketches of the proposed project. And as Mr. Trezenberg pointed out, there were several changes to the plan to respond to staff's comments of last time that I think brings the project into consistency with the comprehensive plan. Connection to Creech Road from the commercial building, enhanced landscaping in that same area, stairway pedestrian connection to the greenway was added, and the playground was put where the dog park was, and the dog park was relocated. There's still both, there's still a dog park, but it's in a different location. There's a playground for children. There's also other open space just for open play for children. At our last neighborhood meeting, one of our neighbors, who I don't think actually lives close by, but does own property close by, Mr. Pierce, he kept asking the question, and I say I did not do a great job of answering the question, is what is this going to do for me? He said that over and over. And so after that meeting, our team has met, and we've talked about it, and we've decided, you know, we do need to work a little harder to come up with a more comprehensive list of community benefits and things we're going to, we're going to propose and offer to the town. First and foremost is roads. And I know that a lot of people have commented on traffic. That's obviously a big concern here. There's a desire for connection between Creech Road and Wilmington Road. I have talked with Assistant Town Manager John Hodges, and we've also talked with two other developers, and at the council's request, there was an ask, please collaborate, coordinate, discuss this project with some other developers, and we've done that. We've talked about, and we haven't gotten all the details, you know, fine-tuned, but we've talked about what would make the most sense of a connection. Would it be at Wilmington Road coming down from the project located to our north, Wilmington Town, Wilmington Place, I think it's called? But that does go through some really difficult wet areas, so we think, you know, some stream crossings, some environmentally sensitive areas. Would it be from Jewel Road, you know, along Jewel, from Creech to Wilmington? It's a straight shot. Now, we don't own or control all that right-of-way, but that is one of the possibilities we've been talking with Mr. Hodges about. Then there's some other, we've also talked with Greg Sandroder, who's the lead on the commercial development, industrial development to our south, Wilmington Road Industrial. And he's, you know, I think amenable to continuing that discussion for a connection down there. I think that's Cook Road. But his development would need to advance a little bit before he's really ready to do that. I don't want to speak for him, but I think he's a, he's a great developer who's done a lot of good things in this community. And so I think we have worked on that, and what we would propose is to make a significant financial contribution to a road connection. This would be over and above what we're required to do. We're required to, you know, improve the roads along our frontage, our frontage on Creech, our frontage on Jewel. That is a given. But this is, and I can't tell you the amount because we haven't come to that amount exactly, but it will be a significant financial commitment that we hope will go in a pot with some money from some other developers and arrange for at least one, maybe a couple of connections between Creech and Wilmington. Another possibility to use some of this money would be to widen Creech Road a full lane. As you know, our property doesn't have a lot of frontage on Creech, but if you just assumed the length of the property sort of close to Creech, which was all frontage, we would be talking about potentially widen. That's the suggestion that Mr. Hodges had. We're still talking about that, and we're certainly receptive of that idea, adding a lane there. We are adding some turn lanes there anyway, but this would be maybe adding one continuous lane along that whole, our whole area of our complex. So I think we'll make a significant transportation commitment over and above what is required of this project. Another thing that I've talked with Mr. Hodges about is, we talked about, we wanted to do something that really related to this community, related to public safety. And he said, well, you know, Wake Forest has this ordinance, and we've been considering something like that in Garner. We don't have it yet, but would be something to add to fire and police. And so I went and looked at the Wake Forest ordinance, and it's significant. It's, I think, $618 per unit. And if you multiply that times our number of units, you get slightly less than $200,000. So a significant contribution, and we want it to go to Garner Fire Stations and Garner Police Department. We certainly can't control how that money was spent, but I know that those departments always need more money, and we're willing to make that commitment to the Town of Garner because we want to be good community participants. We'll also be extending sewer lines to areas, sewer and water lines, areas not served by public utilities. And that, a lot of people in this area, they say, we don't really want connections. We have our septic, we have our well. But at some point, those systems do fail, and it's awfully nice if you have the option of connecting to public utilities. So we think that's a real benefit. Another contribution that we'd like to make to keep it in our neighborhood is $50,000 contribution to the park that is kind of a joint venture between Creech Road Elementary, which is obviously a Wake County public school, but they joint venture with the Town of Garner to have, for the park. And so we'd like to make an improvement to that park, and I'm not sure what that would be. Would it be adding bleachers, a scoreboard, helping with field, a playfield, or something that needs to be done there? We would certainly take our lead from the town administration about what is really needed there. But it's really important to us to keep that in our, not just the larger Garner community, but the very specific Creech Road community. You know, as we've discussed, we're preserving a lot of natural area, over 52% of this 42-acre site, so it's, you know, north of 20 acres is going to stay as natural areas. We would also be willing to offer transit easement. Now, I don't think transit comes this far now, but I think according to Mr. Hodges, there is some expectation that Go Raleigh Transit starts coming down Creech Road at some point in the future. And we would be willing to offer a transit easement to support the future transit if that can be worked out. Obviously, NC DOT has to approve it, Town of Garner has to approve it. The dimensions are unclear. I'm used to doing 15 by 20 in Raleigh, but John thought it might be more like 30. And I think we can work that out. We don't have a lot of frontage on Creech, but I think we can come up with a transit station easement location. And then one of the biggest things is a significant increase to Garner's tax base. I mean, we're estimating maybe $80 million, which is, you know, I know you haven't set your tax rates yet, but you'll do that in June, I guess. So that will be a lot of extra revenues for the Town of Garner that, you know, can finance all the things that a town has to finance, that, you know, things that are beneficial to the community, roads, but also greenways, parks, cultural activities, things that make Garner a great place to live. And we're also working on agreements with the most impacted neighbors. There's two particular neighbors on Creech Road that are probably going to feel the most impact, and we have been working with the Fellers and Sonya Blackman about trying to come up with some things that mitigate, some fences, maybe some cleanup of their properties, maybe removal of a shed that is kind of outdated, and Ms. Blackman's like ready to get rid of it, just some help to sort of help their properties and all. ready to get rid of it, just some help to sort of help their properties and also improve the appearance and also screen them from any impacts from this development. And so we think we have a good list of community benefits. So I feel like we're going to now do a better job of answering Mr. Pierce's questions. What are we going to do for him? We're going to do a lot of things for him, for the Garner community at large, for the Creech Road smaller community. And we are very receptive to continuing these discussions. We would ask that tonight you refer us to Planning Commission if you so decide. If you think we need to stay here and discuss it further, we could do that. But I think we've started that conversation. We think we will continue it at Planning Commission. We'll continue it at the next council meeting. We'll continue to talk to staff. We'll continue to talk to the other developers in the area. We feel like we've made a big commitment, a big financial commitment in a lot of ways. In addition to tax revenue, some real hard money that's going to go towards benefits for Garner and for this community. So with that, I'll conclude, and I would reserve some time to rebut if there are any opposition comments. Certainly available for any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maddox. If you'll stand by, I'm going to ask the council members if they have questions for you.
Okay.
So that being said, are there questions for Ms. Maddox?
Questions or rebuttals?
Questions, comments?
Put the app on the community benefits page. Somebody else can go ahead. I'll be last. I'll be glad to wait.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Vance?
I do have a question.
Yes, yes.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Maddox, early on in your, in your presentation, you mentioned that you can put single-family homes there. Was it considered possibly putting single-family homes at this location instead of high-density apartments?
I don't think so. My clients are developing something a little more dense than single-family, so I don't know that, and I can ask them, but I don't think they were considering that as an option here. You know, the cost of the land that they're paying, this, you know, would not really be justified for them to do single-family development here.
Senator, do you have a question?
Yes, what's your projected build-out frame? How many years would it be before this would be completed if we approved it?
I would think it would probably, I'm going to look back to my guys to see, do we think two to three years? Two to three years before it's done?
Questions at this time?
All right, I'll start working down the list. This project looks like y'all flew a drone over Creech Road and found some land and said, "Hey, we'll plop something down here and maximize it." The reason there's so much natural area left is because of streams and stream buffers. You make it sound like y'all are giving it to us. You have to because of stream buffers. We were told at the last meeting that you cannot see this on the road. So this will be an isolated, disconnected development, not connected to anything else because you can't because of buffers unless Jewel Street went through, and I don't think that's going to happen. You talk about being a part of the community, but you're not. You're isolated. Your choice. You talk about the contribution to the public safety impact to the park. We can't, we don't even have sidewalks. You're not even going to put sidewalks on Creech Road that can go to, to go to the park. We can't connect it. You got to get in the car and go drive to the park. And, you know, coming out and saying we're going to make a contribution, I call that pay-to-play. I don't like it. You turn me off to this development even more than I want to come out and say that kind of stuff. All you're doing is trying to get us, you're going to extend sewer lines, anybody that's can come, the utilities, whether it's this project or another. The impact on the road, and we have the information you provided before, and also our engineer, Ms. Harrison, provided us, we know that it doesn't max out what the road is, but the road is, I drove it again today, is narrow at times with curves and at times heavily traveled, at times it's not. One of the big concerns on your project or any of the other ones you have coming before, it's not just yours, is everything is behind the single-family, and you're improving two little places on the road about as wide as this room. And that's not making an impact to making Creech Road safer.
Well, one thing we've talked about is adding a lane along the entire area of Creech.
Curbing gutter and sidewalk or just asphalt?
Well, I don't know. I've talked with Mr. Hodges about that. He seemed to think that there might not be enough right-of-way to add the curbing gutter. There's a significant amount of right-of-way there, so I can't tell you for sure, but we have discussed that.
Okay, so that most likely won't happen. So again, this is a dense development. This is not what I hope the majority of this council sees, that we want Garner to grow. Just come in and plop something in behind everything else. The only connection to it will be two driveways to Creech Road, little or no connection to that to the community. I just don't choose to seek that type of development in Garner. The impact will be the 300-plus units that will put the traffic out there on Creech Road. It will be, let's see, 1306 is a number of units, 312, average daily trips on Creech Road, 1,895. So about 1,900 trips for this particular project. So the impact is significant. The Wilmington Road Wilmington Place project, we don't know where that goes. We don't know, you don't know, nobody knows because of associated with it. I don't know if we'll ever see that in our lifetime. So I appreciate all your community benefits, but I don't look at all these as benefits. I look at the things that are benefits, and that's the traffic and the isolation of a project. I just don't want to see Garner develop like that. I just do not seek that and hope a majority of this council feels the same way. This is not what's good for Garner. What's good for Garner is things that are involved in the community, not going behind people's houses who've lived there 40, 50 years and popping in 300 units. Planning Council. I'll stop for now.
Okay. Thank you. Was there any other questions from council from Ms. Maddox at this point?
A comment on the memo is sort of, a list as usual, but I think that the transportation memo provided by engineering is sort of the elephant in the room when it comes to discussion on options for road connections and transportation improvements in the area. I think that one of the things that jumped out at me in the memo was, it's a turn of phrase, planning level capacity, which is this theoretical capacity that a road will have when it is fully developed out, and that's 18,000 trips. But the reality is there's a practical capacity and an actual capacity. And so what is that going to be for the foreseeable future before any of these improvements are done? Because the reality is, even with the proposed improvements of just this project, it doesn't come close to addressing those capacity issues on Creech Road. So that's, that's kind of the number one thing is this, we've got a lot of decisions to make on those transportation connections. We can't make it just for this project and not have to, not have talked with all the other developers and get everyone on the same page. As for going to Planning Commission with it, well, that then removes the public input from the process, and that's concerning because that's the last, this is the last time they have that opportunity. So again, there are a lot of conversations. You quoted a lot of unknowns with regards to, well, how much is this going to cost? Who's willing to do what? If you soldier forward and we push you forward, then you're on your own, and you can say, "Well, to heck with that other stuff. We're going to go ahead and do our own thing." I don't know. I mean, it's a possibility. So I've got some concerns on the level of uncertainty in the transportation realm and also in the partnership realm. So those are my comments right now.
Well, we do have to come back. I mean, so there's definitely accountability on that. We have to go to Planning Commission and to come back to you guys. So I was just thinking if we would keep the project moving. We're not trying to cut out any, any public input. I think they have the ability to make public input at Planning Commission.
That is optional.
Yeah.
It's also optional that the council gives them that opportunity the second time it comes back.
Right.
One more comment. Pardon me. Those community benefits all look good, but there's nothing definite here, nothing guaranteed. I know that on your end of it, you know what your plans are and what you are committed to, but we don't. Ideally, if DOT would become involved and improve Creech Road, that would help a lot of these issues, but we all know that that's a real long shot. So I'm concerned that, I'm just concerned like my other council members are, that the ultimate benefit to the area is not, does not outweigh the things we have to consider.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Maddox. I think at this point in the hearing, I'm going to let you have a seat, and I'll ask if we have some members of the public who have signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. Jerry Pierce.
And as you come to the podium, if you would, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Pierce. I live at 109 Cook Street. My opposition to this project has to do with traffic. We've got traffic issues now currently. It's predominantly in the mornings and in the afternoons, and it's when Creech Road Elementary School lets out. It's pretty bad. They back out of the driveway, and they're backed out on the Creech Road, completely blocking the northbound lane. If you're just, if you're traveling, if you're traveling north and you're caught in it, there's nothing you can do. It's a no-passing zone there. If you were to try to pass and have an accident, it's going to be your fault. It's a no-passing zone. It's a double yellow line through there. I've been caught in that situation twice, and my wife once. When I, when it first happened to me, I thought, "Well, maybe this is one of these days when the county didn't have school bus drivers and they was encouraging parents to go pick up their children, and this is just an unusual event." No, because I got caught in it again, and so did my wife later. It's a kind of a common occurrence. And I'm going to bring this to your attention. I'm a veteran. I use the Veterans Outpatient Facility off of Sunny Brook Road. It's Sun Gate Drive. It's where it's at. I was there six months ago, and they told me when the Veterans Hospital opens on NC-50 Highway, that outpatient clinic is closing. All the staff is moving to NC-50 Highway, the doctors, the physicians assistants, the nurses, administrative people, the lab people are going to 50 Highway and the veterans. They service several hundred a day. If you'll drive over there tomorrow at lunchtime, you'll see 50 cars sitting in the parking lot, and if you wait an hour, you'll see them leaving, another 50 come in. When the VA Hospital on 50 opens and that clinic closes, Creech Road is going to be a cut-through for these veterans living in southeast Raleigh. It's going to be coming, coming right up Creech Road, and it's going to add to the traffic issues that we currently have. You guys got a hard job. I know you have to make decisions that's in the best interest of the town presently and in the future as well, but I would ask you do your due diligence. Go look at the VA facility tomorrow if you don't, if you want to take my word for it, that they probably service several hundred veterans every day, and that when that facility closes, they're going to become a straight-up Creech Road. It's going to add to the traffic issues that we currently have without this project being approved. And so I wish there was a lane right there at Creech Road Elementary School so people could merge over into, so when they back up, they don't have to be blocking the northbound lane of Creech Road because currently they are. And so I thank you for your time. I would just ask you to give some considerable thought to this before you make a decision. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Ms. Jones, we have another speaker.
Zeke Wilson.
Sir, Mr. Wilson, if you would, state your name and address, please.
Yes, Zeke Wilson, and 808 Creech Road. I'm not originally from North Carolina. However, I've been living on Creech Road for about 25 years. But there's some been living on Creech Road all their life, 60 years. And I live right across the street from Mr. Creech. The road that his family was named after. He's 80-something years old, and sometime I go over there and talk with him, and he said that he was born or as a little kid, used to live in that house on Creech Road. And he was telling me how that Creech Road was a dirt road at one point, and in his mind, a statement that he remembered buggies going on that dirt road going towards Raleigh. So my concern is that, that make sure that Creech Road doesn't grow too fast. You know, it was a dirt road, and now it's a paved road, and we got to be concerned, you know, about the tremendous traffic. We got school buses from Creech Road that's coming here. We got high school kids that go to southeast, South Garner. They take that route, and we don't want too much traffic. And for some odd reason, and I declare, you know, for the last month, and just about every other day, I've been hearing a siren, you know, a police siren or ambulance siren or something. So Raleigh's, you know, the Creech Road is becoming to be too busy. Just want to make sure that it don't grow too fast. But this particular project, it seems like it's a large project for Creech Road, and, you know, just a little bit concerned with some of the other people that's been living on Creech Road all their life, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Ms. Jones, another speaker.
Ricky Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, if you would, state your name and address.
I'm Ricky Pierce. I live at 1810 Vandoor Springs Road. All of you council members received the email that I sent to you earlier this week. I want to clarify a few things. First off, Ms. Maddox, I never asked how this was going to benefit me, how it was going to affect my quality of lifestyle. I don't live on Creech Road. I haven't lived there for 54 years. I have no intention of moving back on Creech Road. I have a lot of family that lives there. I ask you, what was the positive impact, and how is it going to affect positively their quality of lifestyle? You gave me no answer. You had no answer because it does not positively affect them anyway. We heard from the traffic engineer that talked about traffic. I didn't hear him say anything about Amazon, UPS, FedEx, the postman, the trash collector, emergency vehicles, visitors, and anybody else that'll be going in and out of that area during the day. I believe I saw that 59% of that was unused. Guess what? It's wetlands. You can't build on it. Let's look at it for what it is. It's not right for that community at this time, and until the roads are able to carry the traffic, the roads can't carry the traffic that it carries now. I don't care what the engineer says. All you have to do is go down there and spend some time. I ask each of you, before it comes time to vote on it, pull in Mr. Sellers' driveway, turn around as if you're going to exit out on the Creech Road and you're going to be coming toward Garner. Look how close the hill is. If traffic's coming up the hill at the proper speed limit, no problem. If it's coming up there a little too fast, like I did when I was a teenager and I lived on the other side of the creek, I can tell you, you can come up that hill at 75 miles an hour. I've done it. Somebody's going to get killed right there. It's not ready for an apartment, townhouse, complex of this size. Renters, no, I've never lived in an apartment. I was fortunate I didn't have to. Renters, how permanent are they? What do they really add to the community? Do they run for the town board? They're there until they can do something better. We hear how nice it's going to be. I was in construction. I've seen nice apartments when they were built. Oh, they're first class. 15 years later, when they've changed ownership three times, they're not as new and they're not as pretty as they once were. The clientele isn't what it used to be. The police are making more calls there rather than one car is two cars. During the day, these people are concerned. Mr. Sellers' concern was, how much closer is this turn lane going to put the traffic to his bedroom? These are concerns. These people have got real concerns about what's happening in their neighborhood. No, I don't live there, and I'm not going to live there again. It has a lot of history for me because I grew up on Creech Road, and I'm tired of these out-of-town developers coming in here, telling our town how pretty we are, how we've got everything they want, and when they've got what they want and they leave, we get stuck with their baby. And when that baby gets a little age on it, it's not as pretty as it once was. No, it's not, Creech Road is not ready for this project now. 10 years maybe when the roads 10 years maybe, when the roads catch up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We have another speaker. Ms. Jones?
Deborah Creech Springer.
Yes, if you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Deborah Creech Springer. My address is 1111 Park Avenue. And I too grew up on Creech Road, and I still own property on Creech Road. And Ricky Pierce is my cousin, and I agree with everything that he has said. This Creech Road is not able to handle the traffic that this will bring. And also, there are several other developments being considered in the Creech Road area. Something up at Dan Dixon Drive, and also up near the ball fields now. So there's still, that's going to add even more traffic that people may not even know about or think of. And I would just iterate again, like Ricky said, if you would just come and sit there and watch traffic go up and down Creech Road, any time of day, it doesn't matter that there's double-yellow lines. People pass you on a double-yellow line in a blind curve. It just, it doesn't matter. So I just ask again that you think real seriously before you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Jones, another speaker.
Yes, Nolan Saunders.
My name is Nolan Saunders. I don't have a voice, but I have things to say. And I thank you all very much for allowing me that opportunity. I came to Garner 54 years ago. I kind of took over on Creech Road when Ricky Pierce left. But I have lived in the very same house, March the 1st was 50 years. Great neighborhood. We don't need our streets improved, okay? We don't need a dog park. Y'all take your dogs to the backyard, don't you? That's what I do. We don't need a dog park over there. We don't need any traffic over there. I got out of the Air Force in 1970 and came to Garner. I have previously served on the Board of Adjustments here. I was one-time president of the J.C.'s. We contribute to the town. I'll bet you, not 1% of the people that'll live in those apartments will ever contribute anything to the town of Garner, except traffic. And I know how hard your job is, so I'm not here to say, well, you didn't do this, and you didn't do that. You feel like you've got a blue healer at your heels all the time, because there's always somebody like myself that's unhappy with things. But I'm happy with Garner. I'm happy with Garner like it is. And don't bother to improve Jewel Street or Creech Road. Just consider the things y'all have been really speaking our language almost when you start talking about the traffic on Creech Road. It is unreal most of the day. And as far as the VA Hospital, my daughter works for the VA Hospital, lives at 103 Creech Road. And she will soon be having to make that drive over to 50. But she's happy to be with the VA. She's happy to have the job. And she'll tolerate the traffic. But we don't need to double and triple the traffic on Creech Road. It's just not necessary. So I appreciate it if you will continue with your thinking, planning, and try to make Garner better. Put these apartments somewhere where the traffic is. It's like somebody said about the isolation. That development doesn't connect to anything. You can't even get, I live right across Jewel Street from where they're developing. And you can't even get a sidewalk to go from there across Jewel Street. So now what's it going to connect with, and how is it going to connect? Anybody have a thought on that? But, and going the other way, you'll be in the creek. There's no sidewalk, no, no route to go anywhere, no, no buses, no taxis. There's just no transportation there. It just, that'll just add that much more traffic to it. And that's one of the main thoroughfares for EMS going to Wake Med. So let's give them room to ride and let these other people go somewhere else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Ms. Jones?
That concludes the sign-up sheet.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Maddox, did you have some other comments?
Yeah, just wanted to follow, respond to a couple of comments. I, I get that there's a perception that there's traffic problems on Creech Road. But, and there's been a lot of commentary, Creech Road is not ready for this. Well, how do roads get built? How do they get improved? How do they get widened? How do sidewalks get added? Generally, it's through development. NC DOT has no money. They don't come out and voluntarily do a lot of road projects these days. Not to say they never do, but they, they've been, it's been well-reported that they don't have any money. Town of Garner probably has a limitation on things it can do. So how does, how do roads get improved? And this is exactly how they get improved. And it's, sometimes it's a patchwork. You do a road improvement here, and that's what we're proposing, some road improvements. The jewel connection could be a reality. We need further discussions with the town administration, which we're certainly prepared to do. But I think, you know, Garner is, is a growing town. And I think the council needs to be forward-looking and think, think in terms of growth and not, not just how do we maintain Garner as the small country town that it once was, because it's, that's not what it is anymore. It's, it's a growing town. And so I would say to you that this is, can be a vehicle for improvement to Garner, for the roads and other things, and we'd like to be a part of that. And we do, we do think there's some real community benefits. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. We, we've heard a lot of input, a lot of questions, a lot of complex issues here.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to Attorney Maddox, please?
Sure.
Just like to say to your reference to this one council person, this one council person is well-aware that Garner is growing. And this one council person is aware that we have to make some very tough and hard decisions and consider all the projects. And I just want to make that perfectly clear to you and your staff that we are well-aware of Garner's growth, and also the concerns of the citizens as well, and trying to weigh all as we move forward to do what's best for Garner.
And I understand that, Mr. Vance, and I appreciate that. I, I know you guys are well-aware. I'm just making the point. Thank you.
This is the information that our, Ms. Harrison provided. Existing traffic on Creech Road is 5,200 average daily trips. And this project, if, if approved and built out, would add 1,895. That's a 36% increase in traffic. 36. Now, and we also talked about schools. There are more schools that people may use Creech Road, other than Creech Road Elementary in North Garner. We all know there's North Garner Middle School, East Garner Middle School on Garner Road, and East Garner Elementary, that people may use to go there, may use Creech Road to go there, whether it's approved or not. You know, what Ms. Harrison states here is the ideal goal would be Creech Road, from East Garner Road to Sanford Road, would be a three-lane section, just like Sanford Road is. But none of us will live to see that. It just, it just won't happen. Dollars for DOT are designated to go in other places, and it just won't happen. And Ms. Maddox mentions developers building it and can make some improvements. But again, if you pull up the development map of projects proposed on Creech Road right now, there, there are driveways, and the project is behind it. So you're, you're improving 50 feet here and 50 feet there and nothing else. And so development will not improve Creech Road to the state that Creech Road needs to be improved. It may help a little. And the jewel connection, if it goes to Wilmington Road, it could like it now, it may help a little. But that opens up a whole 'nother can of worms, because the Jewel Street connection to Wilmington Road goes to warehouses, and tractor-trailers go to warehouses. And next thing you know, people be on their phone, trying to find out how to get to this warehouse and cut through Creech Road, and create a whole 'nother issue that no one's even thought about, except me, I don't think. We're talking about a can of worms, about making eastwards connectors on Creech Road that, in the long run, could be more detrimental in making the connection. And whether Jewel Street happens or not, that's just, you mentioned that. That's one possibility. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
No, I, I hear you. That, that connection does open up those possibilities. But I, you know, I think at the last council meeting, there was a lot of talk about, we need an east-west connection between Creech and Wilmington. When I talked to the town manager, that was one of the things we talked about. And I think that's a possibility. The other thing was a lane along, not just our little pieces of frontage, but along our whole complexes, if it were all running on, on Creech. And to your comment, Ms. Behringer, I just did want to say that we are prepared to put commitments and conditions on these things. But they're, they're not quite to that point where we can actually put them in conditions, because we're still talking about those. But we will do that before all's said and done.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
Thank you.
Just like to remind everyone, particularly the citizens who maybe are not as familiar with the process that we're going through. This is not the first time we've heard about it. You've been to two, three, or four different neighborhood meetings. We had the first half of this hearing about 30 days ago. Typically, the next step in the process is to refer a project to the Planning Commission for a more detailed review and their, their detailed judgment about the decisions and the implications. And then it comes back to the town board here, to the town council, for the final decision of yes or no. So this is not a yes or no decision tonight. The decision before the board, before the council, is do we, do we refer this to the Planning Commission for further detail, further information, further input from the citizens? That's the question before us, unless there's some other comments or questions on, on this issue here tonight.
I do have a comment, and I was wondering if Jeff or someone or could pull up the map in the memo in our packet. So in our packet, there's a memo from engineering on several different options for transportation improvements in, along Creech Road, Wilmington Road. I put Jeff on the spot. That, that's the map. So in this memo, there's these three, all these five different improvements. Not, it's not pick or choose. It could be a couple. It could be whatever. If we send something to the Planning Commission with uncertainty around what of these improvements council is favorable towards or disfavorable towards, or doesn't want at all, and any costs associated with them, they'll do their evaluation, but that's of limited value to us as a council, because they're not, they can't make an evaluation on how this project fits into all these improvements, if they happen or not. I think it probably makes more sense to engage the Planning Commission on evaluating these improvements with council, because they all have pros and cons. They all have different price tags. The jewels, just for me having read the memo, there's improvement number one, all of Creech Road. Well, that's not going to happen. I mean, for one reason, even on Jones Sausage Road, we saw the cost skyrocketed when you look at the impacts on well-inseptic systems. And looking at the map, there's going to be impacted property. So that's not an option, but we need to evaluate that as a, as a council and staff and all this. And the Jewel Street connection is very problematic for, it just, it splits down family property, just arbitrarily. But these are the conversations we need to have. And if we have all these developments here, off-step and off-kilter, going to Planning Commission and coming back to council, you're going to be in a waiting pattern anyway to figure out what we're doing. And Planning Commission's going to have to rehash the same arguments over as council makes a decision and changes its mind on its priorities. Where does that leave you when you've already gone to Planning Commission and it changes? So, you know, we deferred this for a month to do this sort of, see what could be done in the short period of time of getting the developers to come together around a plan. You don't have enough input from the council or staff to come up with a plan yet. So that, that's kind of my big concern, is wasting your time, Planning Commission's time, other developers' time, with all these shifting sands that could be potentially created. And again, I think the memo that was created by staff is very helpful in laying out a lot of the pros and cons, but we just don't have the time to deliberate on those. I have other issues too, but that's the one of, that's substantive to the decision-making process at the different levels. And so that's my.
Other council questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, in reference to the memo received from staff relative to the transportation proposed, possible transportation improvements, that within itself will be a lengthy process to go through in order to pull out the data, to get, to get the necessary impacts, and, and to look at possible alternatives, which more possibly work in, in this case. And because we're at such a high level, what I, what I would say is provide, just let this move forward as going to the Planning Commission for their consideration. I don't, I, I don't want to delay the process for that particular evaluation, which from experience, I know will take a lot of time, to go through, pull data, pull it together, look at all the alternative, look at the impacts, and see what's going to work. And then if, even if we could even do it, to go through that process of elimination can be extremely lengthy. I would recommend that we just move it to the Planning Commission for their consideration, come back to us. We have already received the information. And make a decision possibly based upon that. That's where I stand on it.
Is that a motion?
It's not a motion. It was just a discussion. I can't make a motion if, if we're ready for the motion, for the discussion.
Thank you for your flexibility and your input, and I'm trying to figure out the details of the correct procedure, et cetera, as we are. It's a complex issue. It's an extremely important issue. Many moving parts. More complex than our average. Any other comments on, on the process or procedure of what we should be doing?
I'll just make a comment. I think Mr. Vance makes a very good point. If we just send it, we send it down there, obviously, this has to be scheduled. And the different folks can sit down and talk and try to work something out together. We've had that issue happen out on White Oak Road. We're developers. We had to stoplights, four-laning, quite a bit of stuff, that we're willing to step up and do that, you know. And the thing about it is, we got, you're right, we got traffic coming from every which way. And, and talking about the Veterans Hospital, being an old vet, I'm looking forward to going, being able to go there instead of Durham, which has nothing to do with, with what we're talking about tonight. But if we send it to, as Mr. Vance says, to the Planning Commission, let them look at it and see what they kick back to us. Because bottom line, we're going to have to make a decision on it. It's going to come back to us. And, but if people want to sit down and work things out, bring something back that's positive and solid, not a wish list, but, so here's exactly what we do. We got this developer going to commit to this, and this going to commit to this. We're going to do this. Very specific. Then we've got something to bait. But as far as here tonight, I agree with my counterparts up here that there's a lot of what ifs, so I'd be fine with sending the Planning Commission, let them see what they're going to do with it.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Vance. And Mr. Matthews, we're not making a decision, yes or no, about this project. We're, we're making the, the observation that perhaps we should proceed with the usual process, address these transportation concerns, the complexity that won't be figured out in an hour or two, or a week or two. But to, I'm hearing the, the two comments say, let's pass it to the Planning Commission for further study, more time for interaction back and forth. And then eventually, it, whether they recommend that it's a good thing or a bad thing, it still comes back to the town council for a final decision, to rezone and do the things requested or not. But I think the Planning Commission, in my opinion, I don't get a vote, but I get an opinion. My opinion is the Planning Commission can do a good job of evaluating these details, taking a harder look at the different traffic improvement scenarios, see if any of them address the real concerns and the real problem. I tend to agree, my opinion. Let it, let it go to the Planning Commission, and then return here with more study. And Ms. Behringer, you?
I'd just like to add one more comment for the record. I don't live on Creech Road, but I live near that intersection. And Creech Road needs help. It needs improvement from beginning to end, not just where this development is, but all the way up. Many, many times, I've been out walking, and somebody would come flying up Creech Road to the stoplight. The sight distance is terrible, and then they come over that little hill and see the stoplight and just about lose their mind. There's a lot of, a lot of things that need to be improved about Creech Road before we start adding even more.
Certainly, certainly needs review, needs details. I want to thank everybody that are in.
I want to thank everybody for their input. That being said, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Vance. Excuse me. Thank you. So this has been great input, great discussion. I'm going to officially close this public hearing. And with that, we've taken the testimony. We've taken the evidence. There's much more study to be done. At this point, I will entertain a motion to see if there's a motion to move this to the Planning Commission for further review.
I'll move.
Mr. Vance makes the motion to refer it. Is there a second?
I'll second it just to put it on down there.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Vance and a second by Mr. Matthews to refer it on to the Planning Commission for further study to come back here, all in favor?
I've come, I've debated, we're in a debate after our motion.
Okay.
So the question is, what are we asking Planning Commission to do? Because if we're asking them, is their typical charge is to compare it to adopted plans? What adopted plans are they evaluating against? This memo is very powerful because it provides a lot of different options that aren't captured in our transportation plan, comp plan. Some of them are good options. Are we asking them to evaluate this plan against various scenarios of these improvements? And are they going to then ask for information on costs? And are they going to evaluate some of these other projects and how they're going to fit into it? So I just want to know because we need to be very clear with what we're giving them instructions to do. Because to ask them to evaluate all of these connections actually is a good charge for them to look at all of these in the pipeline and make recommendations based on the totality of these projects in the pipeline. It's a lot of, it's asking a lot of, we said we can't do it in an hour. It's going to take them a lot of time to walk through all of these scenarios without any recommendation for council on what our preferences are. I know they often are looking to us for guidance on what our preferences are. So I've just got concerns that we're being holistic in what we're doing and doing the proper evaluation. Because are we going to wait for all the projects to get through the pipeline before we do the evaluation? Or are we going to start doing the evaluation now so that all these projects can jump through the process in a smooth way and a clear way to all of our development partners in the community to know they want these improvements, these improvements, this is the policy we're going to use, this is how much it's going to cost for us to do those improvements if we come together with six other developers and we can just slide on through? So that's my concern with sending it to Planning Commission is we're not giving them very clear instructions on what they're going to be evaluating this against.
Thank you. Those are excellent points. And I think one of the key points you made is look at the totality of this situation. That's something that we've just had renewed attention to within the last year. There's the two different projects that we've all talked about a time or two. One was traffic and one was infrastructure. And in each case, with some guidance and some suggestions from town staff and town council, a half dozen or so developers in each case, one with the traffic other than this one, one with some infrastructure, the developers came together amongst themselves and said, how about we do these things? And how about we do a development agreement? And how about we pledge that we'll all work together to make these transportation improvements in one case, infrastructure, sewage, lift stations in the other, to help this move ahead? And it took time and it took effort. But at the end of the day, as you pointed out, Mr. Dellinger, the other entities came together, that our development partners came together and came up with some solutions. And by the time it came back here to the planning, to the town council, we were able to make a more informed decision based on their addressing those issues. And that's kind of what I'm hearing is that whether it's this body now or the Planning Commission, and whether it takes them a month or three months and more input, but we do need to give them direction and our issues. And I think we can do that in writing and in person to the Planning Commission. We can carry this message to look at the comprehensive picture, look at the totality, come up with solutions that seem to solve a lot of problems. So again, this is my opinions. I'm not voting. Mr. Singleton, some input?
Look at this map that's up here. And we've got to remember, we talk about all these developers coming together. Triumph Point Station, which is at the intersection of Creech and Sanford, is in the process of being built out. Triumph Station Apartments have been approved for some time. They will make the road improvements on their side. The Creech Road subdivision, I believe, was approved pre-COVID. I believe it's a habitat for humanity community. So the improvements they make are not, we're not going to get improvements on them because that's not what they do. So those three projects are not tied into 1306, Wilmington Place, or Dan Dixon, or whatever else. So you don't have a whole bunch of developers getting together. You're down to the two listed that we're talking tonight. There's another proposal over here and another option with warehouse proposal with the Cook Street project. So, and that's totally different because it's not on Creech Road. So when we talk about all this and all these developers and get together, there's not all these developers. You've got two right now, maybe a third. So just remember that. We're sitting here talking about that they're going to, you know, they're going to all start and grow money trees and give us money. And that's just not going to happen. They don't have those resources. So when we talk about with these developers, just remember that, that the light blue ones are all done. And we're talking about the dark blue ones at this time.
Well, remember the other development agreement we entered into with Walter Buffalo, that agreement pulled the, all those developers weren't on the radar completely yet either. So you're really setting the stage for this is the vision for the transportation improvements we want in this part of town. And as new developers come in, they are fully aware of what those expectations are. So that's the precedent we set with the Walters Buffalo agreement. And the Cambria Project, there's a lot of open land still down there, out there that somebody in six months might decide to sell and develop. Well, what's the plan, right? And so that's, again, we have a model for this, but you've got to evaluate, and again, the warehouse project, you've the Cook Road and, you know, it's getting that comprehensive perspective on what the improvements we need to make are, what makes sense, how much it's going to cost, what are we willing to put in? What do we expect future developers to put in? Which they don't exist. We don't know. They haven't come to us yet. That's the process. And the process with the Walters Buffalo, it took, I'm going to look at the attorney, six, nine months to hammer that agreement out to, from, in totality, from the first draft until we approved it.
At least.
So we're already.
And we've amended it once.
And we've, so there's, you can move with haste. But we don't need to move with haste. That's what planning is. I know Jeff Treisenberg would probably tell me that. He'd say, planning is a long-term affair. So I'm okay with moving it to Planning Commission. But there needs to be clear instructions on what they're doing. And there's some stuff they can't do, right? And so we can put it this way. If it goes to Planning Commission, they make their recommendations, comes back to us, three or four of these projects come before us, we have to draft a developer agreement. That process is still going to take six months. It's just more helpful if Planning Commission has that context for what the desired improvements are when they're doing their deliberations. So we don't gain much by push-punning it to Planning Commission now. They don't gain much by us punting it to Planning Commission right now. Do you gain much? I mean. It's a six to nine-month process to get a developer agreement in place and get all these conversations. That's my opinion. I think we can hold off and see what's targeted in the pipeline, get some deeper conversations with industrial development and partners and who's doing what, and set a vision for this part of town. Get them all together, work that developer agreement in parallel with it going to Planning Commission. So we're not waiting. We can do those things in parallel. And it helps Planning Commission with their clarity on what they're providing back to us as a recommendation. So that'd be my argument against the motion.
And again, we can talk about development agreements that Cal comes home. The question is, is this project right for North Garner in this particular parcel of land? And the answer is no, period. I don't care if they pave the lane in front of it in gold. That's not going to help us. It's not the project that we need. It's not ram and cram. This is my favorite term. Y'all probably say it before, ram and cram. We're saving 59% of open space. Now, you have to because of the streams. So, you know, it's the project right. We can fix that 500 development agreements, but we are not going to get enough developers because they're not, they won't have the money and resources to widen this three lanes all the way. And then you come to the bridge between this project and the Wilmington Place, this bridge, the creek. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars, and we're just not going to see that. So we need to get realistic. They can talk all they want. We can talk all they want. And they can come together with a development agreement. The fact of the matter is, one, is the project good for Garner? And two, we cannot improve this the way that it needs to be improved if you want to approve those types of projects. And that is three lane all the way from Garner Road to Sanford. And that's just not something we're going to see in our lifetime, I'm afraid. I'll be quiet. Mr. Mayor, you can call for a question.
Well, before I call for a vote, I want to recognize everybody for their heartfelt energy and input into this. And I would, and again, my job is to help us move through the process, help us be effective and efficient in our meetings. And whether the ultimate decision by this council is that this project is no way it can fit. If the object is to deny this and go on about our business, then we need to send it to the Planning Commission so it can come back for a final decision. If our objective is to take a comprehensive approach and try to work out some issues that could make it salvageable or doable, we need to send it to the Planning Commission. So what I'm saying, at the end of the day, I think we need to send it to the Planning Commission. We need to do what Mr. Dellinger said, give them plenty of information about the comprehensive approach we want to see them take. And if it takes them the six to nine months with our input in the back before it comes back, because there's no need to come back if everybody is saying, no, no, no. If it gets to the place that there's developer agreements or things in process, I'm just saying, I think the logical, procedurally correct, legal answer is to refer it to our subcommittee for detailed evaluation. That's my two cents. And that being said, I think I'll do what Mr. Singleton said. It's called this for vote. And since it is, it is a little complex, I'm just going to restate it. Mr. Vance made the motion to refer this to the Planning Commission for further review. Mr. Matthews seconded it. Both Mr. Singleton had observations, Ms. Behringer had observations, Mr. Dellinger had the very succinct observations about giving many instructions and clarity in their charge to the Planning Commission. So that being said, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, either aye or nay, in favor of referring this to the Planning Commission for further review. The motion was made by Councilman Vance. I'm going to start with Councilman Matthews, aye or nay?
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to, can I make one statement?
Sure.
By sending this to Planning Commission, folks, this is no way we're saying we endorse in this project. We're just going to send it down to the Planning Commission. So don't take that as, well, some of those guys don't hear a thing we said because I heard everything you said, really. And I appreciate it. So, but as far as the Planning Commission, let them do their due diligence. Come back, ultimately, we'll vote on it.
Thank you for clarifying. We can't clarify it enough. Thank you.
A question. I have a question before the vote. At what point will, as council and staff, will we evaluate these transportation improvement options? Because I would add an amendment that Planning Commission not evaluate this project until they have that feedback from council and staff.
I'm going to ask for guidance from our interim town manager, our assistant town manager, who's been working with this, and from our attorney. How do we accomplish the goal we're looking for of getting this to the Planning Commission with the instructions of the comprehensive approach and to give them the time and information they need to do the detailed analysis that we're all looking for? Mr. Dellinger is making a good point. I'm eager for some input.
Mayor, members of council, certainly council could amend the motion to include having them review the information provided in the memo from the engineering department that looks at transportation improvements in this area and bring that back with some recommendations when the item comes back to council. And Attorney Jones, would you add anything to that?
Yes, the charge to the Planning Commission not only is to review consistency with the Garner Forward Plan, but also with the transportation plans. I believe the engineering memo helps to flesh out some of those improvements that could be considered consistent with the transportation plan.
Thank you. And assistant town manager, Mr. Hodges, you've been involved in this directly. You've heard the comments over here. Your input?
Really nothing additional to what has already been said. I think that the memo gives a good starting point for discussion. And we can take direction from council and work with Planning Commission to share that information with them.
So there's been a motion made and seconded. There's been an amendment offered that would give very specific instructions to review the very detailed analysis of the improvements of the various improvement options that was prepared by our transportation staff. And the amendment is that the Planning Commission pay particular attention and review that as well.
Now, the amendment including that was that they not review it until they're given guidance from staff and council feedback on these improvements so that they know what our preferences are for certain options. So then they know this is council's preferred improvement list. They're not so unfavorable of this, but they can still evaluate them. But I think it's helpful for them to know that we've done a certain level of due diligence on cost and configurations and things like that. So that's sort of, that's the amendment.
So how do we do that? Or how do we put that in words that we can follow up on? I'm asking our town attorney and our interim town manager. How does the council, how does the council give specific suggestions or guidance to the Planning Commission? Is that what I'm getting at? Is that what we're getting at?
Yeah, and I think my recommendation would be we discuss it at a work session in the future and walk through these very specific options outlined in the memo. And because to Mr. Singleton's point, it's not a recommendation on the project specifically. It's a recommendation with regards to the transportation improvements we want to see. And maybe they are so expensive, the ones we want, that some developer may opt out. They say, well, we just can't participate. So I think that's sort of the, the idea is to give that feedback so that it can accompany Planning Commission's consideration of the project.
I'd get the words to the amendment that we can agree on and that we can follow up on and do what needs to be done. Can what Councilman Dellinger described be done at a work session?
Mayor, it certainly could. What I hear Mr. Dellinger say, though, is he wants that to be a separate conversation before this project would be then discussed for the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission would have guidance. So council certainly could ask that at the next work session, we include this item. I will tell you that your April work session is very full. So we'd have to look at seeing opportunities for maybe moving something if you wanted to talk about it as early as your April work session. So certainly, that could be an action of council. Now, if council wanted to refer this to Planning Commission and have Planning Commission also review the information provided by the engineering department and provide feedback in parallel, certainly council could do that as well. But it seems like there's two different processes here that are being described, and council would need to decide what you feel is the most appropriate.
Similar, even if it's May, they're going to need time. They're going to have questions if they see it soon. They're going to have questions anyway. They're going to take, it's going to take them time to get back to us. We have another one on the agenda tonight. Going to be in the same boat. So if we put them in the same boat, give us time[1728.74] Going to be in the same boat. So if we put them in the same boat, give us time to give them more information on what we expect in this area. It doesn't have to be April work session. It could be the May work session. That's the, that's my amendment. A future, I didn't, I don't know when they see it, but before they see it, they're able to have very specific instructions from staff and council on its feedback and preferences for these improvement recommendations from the memo.
And Mayor, I would ask Attorney Jones to maybe say a few points about delaying this action any further for the public hearing, just so council has a perspective, because we did delay this action until this meeting, and so further delaying would have some impacts. And so I'll ask Attorney Jones to go over this.
So technically, under state law, once the public hearing is closed, it does automatically go to planning commission. Then it would come back to council. Obviously, that's a decision you can't make, you can't take final action until planning commission at least has done its consistency review with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and made its recommendation on the, on the project. You know, indefinite type continuance is not, not a recommended course.
I'd say that we make a, have a conversation at our May work session, so that then automatically, or what, what was that?
Go ahead, Mr. Dellinger.
It was not an indefinite continuance of the process of the hearing. And I know they have 30 days, and if they don't, we can skip them altogether if we want to. But again, trying to keep in mind, we've got a couple of projects in this area. And it's a significant review. It's a significant lift for the planning commission that only meets once a month. So it actually, if they carry it over more than one meeting, that timeline gets stretched out further and further versus council having the opportunity to intervene with feedback. So I don't know exactly how that fits into what you said, but.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion to amend that, and we've got another comment here.
I just would like to say that I will not be present at the May work session, and I would like to be present for further discussion on this issue.
I guess, again, part of the question is a little unusual here, is do, and I think we'll have to come back and get a second to the amendment and then a vote on the amendment.
I have to accept the amendment.
Not to mention the one that made it. Exactly. But we're, I guess what we're really debating here is can we move this along in good faith and simultaneously convey this information to the, to the planning commission? Or do we have to have another meeting of council to come up with a clarified motion or a detailed report to send to them? Let's all talk at one time. We got time to talk. We got time to talk.
I was just, second meeting in May, not the work session.
Well, again, the motion that there's a second out there, again, and we're just trying to get into the details of can we work simultaneously along with the planning commission? Are we worried about the planning commission to, that they're going to bolt ahead before we can tell them what we really think? Do we have to have a whole nother meeting? Or can we, can we work with them as, you know, as a unit or body?
Mr. Mayor, one suggestion, if you are willing to hear it, would be that to keep on the timelines that are associated with closing the public hearing, we could still introduce the case at the next planning commission meeting. In the meantime, we could have further discussion with council about the needs and expectations. But we have taken things to planning commission with a staff recommendation that they consider holding it open while additional information is gathered. And I think that approach would meet all of the statutory requirements that have been put in place, and also meet the intent Mr. Dellinger was outlining about not making a decision before council has had input that could then be shared with the planning commission. So I would just offer that as one way to move forward, given the circumstances we have tonight.
And we did that not long ago.
Yes, sir.
And the planning commission kept it open for another month while they got other information.
As council's already seen this twice, it would be, it would be planning commission's first seeing, time seeing the case. So I think there's plenty of things for them to hear on a first viewing of the case.
Yes.
Knowing that there's more information still to come, and that additional information would be dependent on us finding the appropriate time to get together with council to have the discussion that's needed.
Thank you. And back to Mr. Vance, who made the initial motion, and a second that has been offered. So feedback on the amendment.
I'm willing to accept the amendment. I'm not clear on the amendment, but I'm willing to accept it, so we can keep it going forward. If the, if we are able to restate the motion with the recommended amendment to a clarity, it would be appreciated. I'm not sure as to what we, what that amendment is.
I'll remove the amendment and restate it. Mr. Hodges' feedback, the amendment is that planning commission not complete their recommendation until they have received feedback from council and staff with regards to the improvements recommended, or I'll say presented, in the engineering memo. So that works on the timeline of getting it to them the first time, and then us having time in between to give them some feedback, and then they can incorporate that into their broader evaluation of the consistency. That's the amendment.
Accept the amendment.
And you were able to transcribe that for the record? Okay. So the amendment was to make sure that we're getting the information and the follow-up advice to the planning commission, so they can get testimony and start on it at one meeting, and then continue it to another meeting to make sure they've gotten the feedback that we, and they've reviewed the transportation memo. Do we, do we need a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. And the one who seconded the first one, seconded the second one. So, and all in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Nobody's opposed the amendment, but we've got the motion and the amendment. And I think I'm going to go ahead and call for just, just the voice vote, all in favor of passing this along to the planning commission with the caveat, as stated in the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Nay.
Okay. That seems to be four in favor and one opposed. That being the case, it looks like the majority says pass it to the planning commission. That passes. So that's the end of.
And while that sounds good, there are no money, there are no dollars, there's no estimate on all these improvements. We're just floating the wind. That's all we're doing. That's all we're doing with this project. There's nothing, we, you know, if you read Ms. Harrison's information here, she has challenges for accomplishing full improvement, potential short-term improvements toward this goal. And on many of these, you're crossing, not only improving Creeks Road all the way, except at the creek, but you're crossing streams with Jewel and Wilmington, significant infrastructure cost, impact from Cook Street on the community because it's connected to commercial area. So, I mean, we're just sitting here spinning our wheels. We're not going to see any of that stuff happen anytime soon, maybe in our lifetime. So we're just spinning our wheels, kicking the can down the road. Best thing to do is send the planning commission, bring it back, us vote up or down. I don't think it'll pass, and then be done with it and move on. That's the best way to handle it, but we're not, so we'll see what happens. Because the planning commission cannot keep it indefinitely because that violates their opportunity to be heard and to be voted on. We cannot do, we cannot sit and hold this six to nine days, as Madigan says, in file something, or talk to Ms. Jones and say, you know, you cannot continue to do this. We cannot just hold them up because it's a process. They, they need to be heard in a timely manner. They expect us to vote on it in a timely manner. So, anyway, we're just spinning our wheels. This is good information, and Damian's right, but it's going to take months and months, not a year, to get all the information on this. And I don't think they're willing to wait for that, nor should they.
Okay. Motion's been made and passed. Just going to the planning commission, and I'm going to make a decision. We're going to take about a seven-minute recess here. So if you would, grab your drink of water, stretch your legs, be back just before eight o'clock, please, for the second public hearing.
Thank you. We now reconvene after our brief recess. And we'll move ahead to a public hearing on the second item on our agenda here tonight, which is related to Wilmington Place. And our presenter for the staff presentation is Mr. Treisenberg. And it's still kind of warm in here, isn't it, Mr. Treisenberg?
A little. All right. So, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. I don't have any additional information to present from the staff perspective on this one tonight. I do have the last presentation up and available if we want to refer to anything. But the applicant is here again to discuss with you some of the things that they've been working on, some of which I think they've been making some progress, but some of it may not just have been ready in time for this particular packet. But I would encourage you to invite them up to give you updates, much like we did on the last case, and then we can discuss what we want to do with this one.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg, brief and to the point. And at that point, I believe we will ask for the applicant to add to the presentation. If you would please approach the podium, introduce yourself with name and address.
Thank you, Mayor Gupta. Charles Walker, 275 North P. Ridge Road in Pittsboro, North Carolina. I was here last month and brought the presentation forth for this proposal. As far as planning goes, this is a down zoning. It's currently zoned MF1, which would allow more units than we're purporting to do and would also allow the A Word apartments. We're not doing that. We're doing townhomes and single-family lots on this project. Hundred and sixteen units, fifty-five single-family dwellings, and sixty-six tenant homes.
Can we get him to speak into the mic a little bit better?
I apologize.
He's doing a good job. It's our audio system that's a little bit weak. I've sat in your seat, and I was doing this the whole night. So, thank you. Anything you can do to speak loudly and clearly will help all of us.
I will pretend I'm talking to my wife, so I will speak out.
I hope she's watching right now.
I'm sure she is, and I'm going to pay for that when I get home. This board and the staff asked us to do three things at the last meeting, one of which was to have another neighborhood meeting. We did. We had one person come to us virtually. He was here checking on the lot immediately to the south of us. His parents owns the lot. The power to their house goes through our property. He wanted to make sure that his parents' property was not going to be affected by the realignment of the power, and I told him that would not be the case. And then he had no feelings either for or against the rest of the project. So, we did do that. The second thing you asked us to do was provide elevations. We brought that to the staff. Jeff has our copies of the elevations. He found three or four items that the conditions and the elevations were slightly in conflict with each other. I told him in an email today that all the elevations will be changed to honor the conditions. It was such things as the elevation that we showed in the townhomes showed a flat facade. It didn't show a break that's promised in the condition, so we will change the elevations to do that. There was a twenty-four-inch water table that we've got to put on there that will do that, and a couple carriage home details on the garages. We're going to do all of those. So, we appreciate Jeff's review on that project. The other thing you asked us to do was see if there's anything we can do about traffic. And the only thing we can do on traffic or the traffic that's outside of our project was try to purchase the Porter House, which is at 420 Creech Road. Last Friday, we talked with the landowners and thought we had a deal. They were agreeing to it in principle, but they wanted to do some thinking, wanted to do some number crunching. We told them that would be fine. Monday morning, we got an email from their attorney that they had hired, and he said he didn't like the way we spoke to the Porters, and now the cost of the house was $1.2 million. So, we told him, "Thank you, but no thank you, and we're going on our merry way." However, what we are being able to do, out of all the projects on Creech Road that have been discussed over the last few months, our project references and honors the town's transportation plan better than any other one in the area. First of which, we are bringing, we are building a majority, we're building Wilmington Road through our entire project. We're short of the creek. Everyone knows little arm branches there, which would need a bridge. We had a bridge designed. We figured out how much it would cost to do our fee and lieu payment. We have offered that money to the town to the tune of $1.65 million. That's one of our conditions. It is a flat condition. It's not a vague promise. It is an ironclad decision. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to complete that link because of what happened with the Porter House. We did have discussions during the interim with the staff and a few members of the council that maybe what could be done if the bridge at Wilmington, excuse me, across the creek is not of vital importance, may be using some of that money to spread around the road infrastructure in the area. Mr. Hodges, if I say anything wrong, please let me know. And so, our amount is still the same. It is calculated on an actual design of the bridge crossing the creek. If in its infinite wisdom, the staff and the council feels the need to take that money and spread it somewhere else in the area to fix a more immediate need, have at it. We are, again, we are a hundred and sixteen units. We're not a very big project. Our traffic calculations, our traffic counts are so low, it didn't even trip the required for a TIA for the town standards. It's very, we're very small. As you can see on the plan, we are showing the Wilmington Road that splits our project in half. In the upper corner, you'll see what will be the future someday Creech Road, new intersection that is laid out as per the transportation plan for the town. And we have, we've gone over the project a couple of times with play areas. We have three play areas which hold gazebos and play areas around them with grass for people to kick balls and all that kind of stuff. We have forty percent open space. And Mr. Singleton, it's more than just wetlands that we're saving. But in essence, that's really where we are in the grand scheme of things. We ask the council to move us to Planning Commission to discuss any further issues, and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Excellent, Mr. Walker. Thank you. And while you're there, let's see if we have some questions from council.
The house you're referring to, you feel like that's a, man, that's a good real estate price.
That's a great real estate price.
Is that pretty much a done deal, in your opinion?
Well, our offer, our offer was, to be quite frank, was $400,000, which is more than twice what they paid two years ago, which is what they said on Friday they thought they would live with. And then we got the attorney's letter. I brought a copy of the attorney's letter so you know that I'm not lying to you. It does in fact say $1.2 million.
Wow, okay.
I'd like to sell your house, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you.
Move my house into a road now.
Sorry, sorry. Mr. Singleton?
To confirm, you spoke about the son, the property owner to the south of the property. That's the Deale House there, right beside the creek?
Yes. I spoke to their son for about forty minutes on the neighborhood meeting. Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. I assume that's who you were talking about.
That is who we were talking about. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for now.
Any other questions? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Vance?
Questions?
Okay, any closing comments?
When you get the answer you want, you shut up, so I'll walk away.
Thank you for the information. Very helpful. And I guess at this point, we would recognize members of the public who have signed up to speak. Ms. Jones, do we have some speakers?
I may address the council. So, because these two projects are in such close proximity, you can consider the comments that you heard at the first public hearing with respect to the general area and the traffic issues as part of this. We did not have any members of the public sign up for this particular public hearing, but I've been informed by the clerk that there is a lady in the audience who did not speak the first time who would like an opportunity to speak on this particular project.
Let's give her the opportunity. If you would address the podium and introduce yourself with your name and your address, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lauren Porter, and the address we're speaking about is 1420 Creech Road. That's where my son Austin lives. He's a first-time home buyer. I live in Dayton. I'm sorry, I live in Durham. 124 Wicklow Lane, Durham, 27713. And I just want to state to the council that we're not opposed to working with the developer, but the house wasn't purchased by the developer in 2021 in May when Austin bought it, and we've never heard a word from the developer about this project whatsoever, other than the public announcements, until Thursday, the 11th, at about 11 o'clock in the morning. So, five business days ago, he called us both on the phone, verbally said, "Hey, we'll give you $400,000 for your property. What do you think?" In the middle of the day, we both had to communicate with each other. We were both at work. I did say we would entertain discussions, but that I would need to hire an attorney. Obviously, you don't make a decision like that in five minutes. So, I was called again at 4:25 PM on Friday, April 12th, and I did receive a follow-up to some of the questions we have about how far along is the project? How long could my son stay in the house? Where would he go? How would we negotiate those types of things? And they did give us fair answers, but again, I said we were going to need an attorney. They asked if we could possibly have an answer for them by the time of this meeting so that they could give an answer to you, and I said that would be off the table because I would not be able to retain an attorney in that amount of time. However, we would try, and we did. We rushed around trying over the weekend to get ourselves attorney representation. He got to work on it first thing Monday morning and said, "Let's see how serious, you know, we don't even know what's going on." I mean, it was so fast. So, yes, he made that high offer. And yes, we also have copies of the email that says, "Thank you. We'll tell the council that you said no." That is not what we said. We need more time to evaluate, to understand what's happening, and to make sure that it's a fair offer. Like I said, this is a first-time home buyer. You can check with the city of Garner to see that he just had permits approved by the city to do an over $50,000 remodel. He has every intention to stay. So, this is a very big decision with a lot of moving parts, and we can't make it in three business days. So, I just wanted you to know what that situation actually is, and we are still opening, open to working with the developer. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Very enlightening. There's always two sides to every story. Right. Always complex and big issues in short time. Certainly, you can understand many participants in this and their eagerness to move ahead in a way. Mr. Walker, I can tell you want to say something.
I just wanted to be on record that I didn't know that Ms. Lauren was here. I've never met her before. She's completely right. If her and her son are still open to discuss it, we are open to discuss it. But when we tried to, when we tried to speak to you again, your attorney said, "Stop talking to you." So, we did, and that's, and so if that option is still open, we're still talking. Thank you.
Wow, we precipitated dialogue. This has been a good night.
Say government doesn't work.
I didn't say it's a done deal. I said it's good to have people talking. Well, that's great. We didn't strike a deal. Nothing's been closed, but thank you for communicating. That's what most of these issues boil down to. We just have to learn to communicate. So, thank both of you. There were no other speakers lined up on this. I understand, Ms. Jones. Is that right? No other speakers?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, again, we had no questions for Mr. Walker, I think. We don't cross-examine the public testifiers over here. So, I guess at that point, I would be willing to entertain motion to do the, what I'm going to say is, the usual next step of referring this case to the Planning Commission for further review. Is there?
Well, maybe if they're still talking, maybe we should put this off thirty more days because what could happen here, if this did happen, we don't know, but the improvement here on Creech Road in this project would be significant and make Creech Road safer because it'll take the curve out of it, the bad curve, and there'll actually be a stop, a sign, intersection at Creech and the Wilmington Road extension, which part of it will be built. So, this is one project that actually can improve Creech Road and make it a safer road, and it'll have improvements along its frontage also. So, I don't know. Maybe should we wait thirty days and let them continue to talk? If we send the Planning Commission, you know, I just don't know. I'm just throwing that out there as an option.
I would almost recommend making the same motion we made on the previous one because they need time to discuss, and that's going to inform the Planning Commission's discussion of that area. And so, I really, I think we all really appreciate you coming and engaging and y'all getting to talk. It's really great. And I think also you can kind of see our process and also how concerned with safety and all these things. Congratulations to your son in his first home. That's always a big deal. So, it's kind of emotional, too. I understand that, too. So, I think, I guess, we're on the same track as the other one. There's sort of a sixty-day window. There's Planning Commission May, and then, so it would put, June would be the time to get to Planning Commission. Maybe y'all have decided something, maybe not, but at least there's that window, and that helps potentially the other project as well. So, I think I'll put that in the form of a motion for, we haven't finished discussion yet. We're still a public hearing. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Always room for more comment, more communication. There you go. Mr. Matthews, you're burning to communicate.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just, it's a fun night tonight, folks, I'm telling you. Somebody told me, I said, "I would not have your job for nothing," sometimes, but we try to do the right thing. I'm glad we got some negotiation going here. As my colleague, Ms. Singleton, said, "This is a great opportunity to possibly do some great things on Creech Road," which is a good thing. And I guess my question is, how long do you think, if we, I'm just saying if, we refer this to the Planning Commission, do you think you guys can have that conversation well before then and reach some understanding? Or I'm just offering that as a question to you guys. Talk in the hallway.
I think, I think.
...pieces, so we will negotiate.
Yes, yes.
Before we make a motion?
Sure.
Just a clarification, people here in the audience, could Mr. Walker come to the podium and just point out here, Mr. Walker, that if the Creech Road extension, or the realignment, I'm sorry, where would that exactly take place in here? We see there's a one entrance into the subdivision, but the Creech Road would come?
I think Jeff's going to pull it up for you.
I think Mr. Treisenberg's way ahead of us here. Exactly how far it would?
We assume that if we are able to work out a deal with the Porters and make that realignment at the curve of Creech, what that does is that allows that section of Creech to now turn, and we would eliminate the curve and the pavement that's currently there, and Creech would realign through our neighborhood and then join back in Creech Road about where the house is below us.
The first road is going to be this first right. The extension, excuse me, the realignment would go past that and mesh in somewhere down below that road.
Yes, sir.
So, that road would be in existence in a right turn in?
It would be a three-way, it would be a three-way intersection.
A three-way intersection?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I just wanted us all to know what we're talking about here. And then up here, you would have another three-way intersection or definitely a stop moving at Creech Road onto Wilmington.
There'd be a three-way intersection, I'm sorry, I misspoke. That would be a three-way intersection where we would remove the Creech curve, or the death curve, as we call it. That would be a straight shot into Wilmington. There'd be a straight connection into Wilmington.
And that would be a three-way intersection where people, then we come down and turn right on Creech, and that alignment would, the new alignment would be right there, right past, right below the first road?
Yes, sir.
Let me suggest that Mr. Treisenberg tell us the same words while he points with his pointer and just get it one more time.
I was trying to follow.
Yeah, you're doing a good job. Just to make it crystal clear.
So, Creech Road, if you're traveling north towards Raleigh, there would be a T-intersection here, but then Creech would veer off this direction and join Wilmington, and there would be a three-legged intersection here. You could then turn left to proceed on Creech and up Sanderford into Raleigh. This portion from here to here would go away. Does that help?
Accurate, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. Very helpful. Does that address your question, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I just thought the public may need to hear that, what has been talked about to try to make at least the main road safer. And then when you close that, the property owners, which this project's on one side and the property owner on the other would go, the property line in the middle.
Split down the middle the right way. Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Walker while he's up here? Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there was a lot of good communication up here, too, and I almost felt like a motion was getting ready to be made. More discussion. And before we do that, we will actually close the hearing if there's no more testimony, no more opinions out there. The hearing is closed, and now we will consider a motion as to what to do next. Mr. Dellinger, you had it on the tip of your tongue.
A move that we, so a little more discussion makes sure we're clear on the timeline that we want to propose. Is it along the similar timeline as the previous one, since they're having their conversation? And so, by the, the Planning Commission sees this the next meeting. It'd still be held over to another meeting to, again, they'd still have time because really the conversation on all of Creech Road depends on what they come up with. So, I'll make my motion to refer this to Planning So I'll make my motion to refer this to planning commission and use the amendment language from the other motion.
Bear with me.
I just want to make sure they're identical so that they're legally appropriate.
I believe it was to refer it to planning commission, but planning commission not complete their recommendation until they receive feedback from council and staff regarding the engineering memo, which would be the option, the road improvement options.
That doesn't, we can't control what they do, so that, that's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion from Mr. Downer, second by Mr. Vance, to refer it to the planning commission with the same instructions that we did on the last motion. Is there any other discussion on that motion? If not, I'll, I'll ask for a vote here. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Hearing none, it was unanimous. It will be referred to the planning commission. Thank you all for your input, important stuff, complicated stuff, time, time well spent by everyone here. So thank you all for your patience. Now we can, now we get to some other fun stuff. Now, you talk about fun, we're talking about splash pads. We're talking about parks. And I think I'm going to kick this over to Maria, our Parks and Rec Director, to tell us about the upcoming playground, inclusive playground, and the information we have going to White Deer Park. We'll see y'all at White Deer Park. Thanks for coming, come out to the park. Splash pad, wear your bathing suit.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I would say that you say, we save the best for last, but I think you have agenda items after this one, so, but we're excited to be here this evening and bring to you an update on the long-awaited White Deer Park Inclusive Playground. We have the design team tonight, and they'll be doing the bulk of the presentation. I'm just here to introduce them. We have Robert Pratt and Michael Alderman from Surface 678, who are going to really walk you through what I think it's a pretty exciting change to White Deer Park, update to White Deer Park. So again, bringing a design update, we're at 75% design. This is a pretty important milestone in the process of designing any construction project, and we also have some cost estimates for you for the project. Just, this is really more for documenting the timeline of the project. We started this project about a couple of years back. We've had several community meetings. We also had the very good news of receiving some additional funding through the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management. That's really going to help us be able to deliver this project. And again, very positive feedback that we have received throughout the community meetings that we have held. The very first one, just a quick overview of the existing conditions of, this particular playground was the original to the park when it opened in 2009, and over the years, because of its materials, has deteriorated significantly and mostly has been removed at this point for safety reasons. But we did get some really good feedback from the community at that initial meeting of what they wanted to be kept, or the concepts of that playground that were really meaningful to them. Primarily, the big slide and the sand area continue to be beloved by the community, so you'll see them having a new life in the new design. And a couple of other things, again, and if you see a checkmark on this presentation, all the feedback that we received from the community, we have incorporated, or our design team has incorporated in the new concept. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Robert and Michael, who have been working with us for the past year or so on this project.
Thanks, Maria, and thank you all for being here tonight. We're, we're really excited about the project. We've had, we've really enjoyed working with Maria and Katie on this, and we've really had a fun time engaging with the community members and listing the community, as we've been fortunate enough to work on this project over the last year. So in, Maria mentioned that we had, had, we've had previous community meetings, so back in May of 2023, we had our first, we listened. What we really wanted to do was hear about what was working, what was, what was their interest in keeping, what could be done better. And so the current plan is right here on the screen before you. This has been recently shared at a second community meeting, as Maria mentioned, back in March, to, you know, very positive feedback. So what you see here, and I'm going to do an overview of the plan, and then we've got some additional, you know, images that really start to identify the character, the look and feel, and give you a good idea of what this playground experience should be like for the community as we look to sort of reimagine the space. But a few things to point out here are that we really wanted to be cognizant of the existing conditions. We wanted to work diligently to remain within the current footprint of the existing playground, and we've really worked hard and strive to try to preserve tree canopy as best we can, not only along the peripheral edges of the site, but also maximize tree canopy within the interior spaces of the park as well, or sorry, the playground as well. Some goals of this are really to improve accessibility, provide a maximized inclusive experience for all, so that everybody has an equitable experience when they visit White Deer. There were different components that the community was really outspoken about wanting to maintain, the water play, the sand play, the big hillslide was a, a big winner in terms of, you know, kids and parents alone, altogether, they, they just love those different elements. And then what we've also thought about is just the materiality of the space. So, you know, we've, we've chosen materials that are very durable, but at the same time, by nestling this within the trees, the idea is to make it feel like it's part of nature, inherently sits and exists within the surrounding context of White Deer Park, and that nature context is certainly an important piece of it. So walking through this a little bit, in the upper right-hand corner, you're going to see some swing elements, a series of sort of circuitous paths that allow parents and kids to kind of wander through the spaces. There is some very interesting topography, so we've been able to play with the grade of the spaces to really create interest, provide some separation between the different spaces that you'll see in some of the images that Michael will share here in just a moment. A couple of other things that we really wanted to make sure, we, you know, I'm, I'm a parent of multiple kids. I know that, you know, when kids come, parents are just as involved in this experience as well. So we want to make parents and caretakers appreciate the experience, welcome to the park, and, and as comfortable as possible. So there's been, we've strategically located seating elements in places where the parents and the caretakers can be just as comfortable and invited into the space as the children are as well. I mentioned that we were working in the existing context of the site, so we've been able to maintain the existing lawn to the north. We've preserved the existing woods along the western edge and the southern edge of the site. We've worked with the existing picnic shelter to the southeast, and we've sort of reimagined and sort of reinvigorated the existing sensory garden that's noted as number 10 on this site plan here. But really, what we've done is we've looked to create sort of whimsical experiences that engage all ages, all abilities. There's a treehouse, which is basically number one. So I'll work sort of upper-left corner, there's a treehouse, there's sort of a, a raised berm area that you'll see as sort of number two, sort of like a hillside slide that is an inclusive, accessible element within the playground. The hillside slide has sort of been reimagined as well. There's sand play at the bottom corner, where you see number five and six, with an accessible inclusive sand play table element included in that as well. Continuing to work through the site, number 15, sorry, my cursor works. So number 15 is where the existing stream and water play component, you'll start to see that reimagined and sort of reinvigorated within the existing context of the park. There's some climbing elements here, swing elements here. These are sort of movement elements that allow kids and groups of kids of all abilities and ages to, to, to spin within the context of the park. And then, again, the sensory, the sensory garden at the bottom-right corner, sort of reimagined. We've got some new play and sound equipment within that. But really, you know, again, trying to think about sitting this within the existing context. It was important, tree preservation was of utmost importance because we want to make sure that it's shade, there's shade there for everybody to enjoy, and we really want to nestle this thing within nature as best we can. I'll let Michael walk through some of the renderings.
Hi, I'm Michael Alderman. I'm a registered landscape architect. We're with Robert on this project, and obviously Katie and Maria. Yeah, obviously, reiterate everything what Robert said about basically trying to keep everything that's already great about this current playground and enhance it, and then, you know, really add a layer of accessibility and inclusivity. The main anchor of the park playground is this tree tower, and you can see the, the berm that gently rises slope, so it allows a kid with accessibility issues to access this just as any other kid would, and then find themselves on this sort of elevated platform, which we kind of refer to as like the treehouse or the birdwatching station. And we work directly with the playground equipment vendors to really dial in a, a design that, you know, this becomes a destination. We've added an additional platform to the design since, you know, earlier on in the design meeting phase, and I recognize a few faces from the community meeting we had out at the shelter there. So this image really shows that large tree tower, as well as the reimagined big slide, which has seemed to be beloved, and we heard that multiple times from members of the community. There's also other accessible elements on this play mound, like the roller slide with a transfer station, which allows a carer to catch up to the kid once they're at the bottom of the slide, and then, you know, provide them the equal opportunity to get up and down the slide multiple times. This just shows another view of, you know, how that walking path sort of gradually makes its way up to the entrance of the tree tower, and you can see it's sort of, I think it's a real great anchor to the playground and also provides, you know, another big sliding opportunity. But I think we've tried to respond to the natural character of the playground by, you know, one side of this is play element, and one side is, you know, more native grasses and plantings. And then you can see the, the dry creek bed on the right side. This is the sand play area that Robert mentioned. We've included a design for a raised sand play table, so someone in a wheelchair can access that sand play opportunity, as well as, we heard from the community that they wanted to see more toddler experiences, so I think sand play is a really great opportunity for that, and we've got some smaller toddler-sized pieces in here. This is the raised bridge that crosses the existing dry creek bed. One of the members of the community suggested, you know, a railing would be great to provide more inclusivity for people with visual challenges, so that's something that will be included in the final plan. And then you can see the accessible spinner, so that's wheelchair accessible, any other sort of mobility issues, and I think this is a really great centerpiece for the entrance of the park, as well as the existing cistern, which we are reconnecting. I think water play was something that everyone was interested in, and we've worked with a civil engineer to figure out how best to reimagine that connection and, you know, provide an interactive water feature. This is some of the climbing elements and a, a drink fountain, which would be replacing the existing one. Some of the swing, swinging elements. Maria constantly reminded me that she wants as many swings as possible, and I think we've really maximized the space to get a range of swings in here. And sort of the seating elements that Robert, Robert touched on, you know, adjacent to each of these spaces, you know, for supervision. This area is the existing sensory area, but we're adding some really cool musical play instruments. We got a lot of great feedback about these. This gives another view of the access to the tree tower and that roller slide, which is great for people with hearing aids, and it provides less static, so again, focus is inclusivity. Here are the swings. You can see we're right up against the existing lawn, and I think there's some great connectivity between these two spaces. This just gives a look from the playground equipment vendor of what that treehouse might feel up top. And then this is that sort of more accessible landing, which gives more moving parts to kids with, you know, visual disabilities. And then I'm gonna hope this, this video fly-through works. Bear with me. And if not, I'll open it up on YouTube, but it looks like it might work for me. So there's no sound on this, but taking you from the existing parking lot, you see that there's some existing trees along that edge that we're, we're keeping, and the existing pine shelter, which is a really great feature of this playground. We've kept all that. We're providing the swings adjacent to that big open lawn area, which I think the, the park already keeps activated. You can see the kind of large existing trees that we're maintaining. This is the accessible spinner, and I'm going a little quick, but you see the, the dry creek bed that sort of runs through the site. I think these connecting paths really promote activity and movement. Here's a sense of the tree tower and that accessible slope, and how it sort of interacts with this bigger slide down the hill, which kids seem to really love already. A sense of the seating opportunities that frame the space. There's that climbing element, which I think really provides a lot of, you know, active, you know, muscle development opportunities, and that's kind of the overall fit. You know, you can see the existing woods line and, and those trees that we're keeping. To summarize, we're trying to provide inclusive play elements for a range of ages and just abilities, providing ample seating for parents and caretakers, enhancing existing features like water play, the hillslide and sand play that's sort of already there, but we're, we're trying to make better. The rubber surfacing provides a stable and flat surface to maximize accessibility, and then we've mentioned the existing trees to retain the shade, but also the natural character. A quick summary of that community meeting, too, at White Deer Park. I mentioned, you know, how we plan to add the handrail, some, some requests about the swings. People love the water play element. We're working to make that more interactive. There was a request about, you know, providing shortcuts to get back up the roller slide. People were really excited about the playground and had lots of feedback, so, and we, we've worked on that treehouse landing. I'll pass it back to Robert to talk on the cost estimate.
Thanks, Michael. So as part of this, we are developing some preliminary estimated project cost. That's what you see on the screen here. So this would include estimations of pre-construction, so that's going to be like estimated cost for contractor mobilization. We're going to have to, it's, we're going to be really diligent about making sure that we have a contractor install erosion control, a lot of tree protection. We're, you know, we're very accustomed to working in these sort of sensitive natural environments, so tree protection is certainly a piece of that top-line item that we're going to be very aware of when we get into the construction administration phase. But then you start to see the cost of construction hardscape, so that's going to include all of your concrete pavements, your sidewalks, the poured-in-place rubber, so all of the colorful surfaces that you saw on the ground there are protective. They're poured-in-place rubber, so they're, they're durable, but they also have inherent fall protection capabilities as well. So if a child falls off equipment, there's shock protection within it, and that's all very, included within that cost right there. The playground equipment itself is a big piece of this playground budget, so that includes the treehouse that we talked about sort of being that focal element, the slides, the climber, the swings, and that's sort of the installed cost of all of that equipment. Landscape and plantings is a considerable piece, but we do feel like that's very important. So not only are we trying to really nestle this within the existing tree canopy, but we're also proposing new plantings, so that we're thinking about, you know, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, what is the experience? So these, we're sort of reforested, re, you know, reimagining, you know, that tree canopy evolving over time as new trees come, you know, are, are able to grow over the next, you know, 10, 15 years, as well as those ground plane plantings that are shrubs or ornamental grasses that are really, you know, consistent with that native palette that you would find here in the triangle. This also includes utility costs. That's going to be storm drainage, a few waterline connections. We mentioned reconnecting and making sure that the, the existing cistern functions with the water play element, so that's a part of that. Some site furnishings, and then the other line items are estimated contractor fees, and then certainly some contingency as well. So the projected estimated cost is right around an approximate $975,000 plus or minus at this point. Timeline, so in bold, you can see that's where we are today, April Town Council feedback. We're hoping to take your comments and any feedback that we get today, you know, work those in over the next month or so, make sure that we address all the comments. those in over the next month or so, make sure that we address all the comments, making sure everything is captured. And then our plan is to submit 90% construction documents, and then soon in May and June, we anticipate going through the TRC review process and hopefully subsequently following, you know, editing per those comments and then looking for final construction documents somewhere midsummer, July is what we're estimating at this point. We're hoping to bid the project late summer and really being, we're looking forward to awarding construction contract early fall. So September is where our goal is right now of awarding a contract on this project. We think it's gonna be about a six-to-month, sorry, six-to-eight-month construction process is what we're estimating. And so, yeah, next steps. So here we are today. We're hoping to provide any, you know, obtain any feedback that you might have for us. Take that, finalize our documents, and as I mentioned, we really wanna submit the project to the TRC Technical Review Committee here as soon as possible and start the permitting process. And then subsequently, we'll be moving forward to construction document completion and bidding
Questions from council?
Just a comment if I may. I'm excited about this project. We've talked about it, and we had a smaller one, north side of town, had ups and downs, but this inclusive playground is gonna create a lot of opportunities for everybody living in Garner as well as those limitations. So I think it's, I want it to be something we're gonna really be proud of, and I think that's where we're going. We're all on the same sheet of music on this and provide the kids and the families a real good time and a great experience. So this could wind up being a destination for a lot of people, because I know we're looking at the water park on the other side, Splash Pad, and this is gonna be very unique, and I'm excited about getting it. So thank you for what y'all presented. It looks great, and I'm glad you're looking at every little detail, like the water, the rail, and different things, everything to make it better, because I've seen the presentation out there, and the people coming in, they were very excited about it, so, great job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your work. I got to see this last night at our Parks and Rec Committee meeting and really, really do like what I see. I asked a question last night, and I'll ask it again, because it was a curiosity question. It's like, how, if someone has a child in a wheelchair and we have the swings, how does it work? And then Maria pointed out that you don't have the swing with the chair anymore because of issues with that, but you can use the oodle swing if they can pick them up and put them in the oodle swing, which goes in all directions. It doesn't go back and forth. It goes north, south, east, and west, and everything in between, so that opportunity is there. And the question, a question was asked last night, was a good question by one of the committee members, was, you know, that's not many swings, but the swings take up a lot of space, and because you have to have the zones, hall zones, all this other stuff, and the clearance zones for kids to swing, so that's why you see the five swings. So I appreciate what y'all done with the surface incorporating what is still out there that can be used and really do like the project.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I would have to echo my fellow council members' comments. I really, really like this, this whole concept, all of the elements. And every time I see a picture of it, of the slide in particular, reminds me when I took my three-year-old granddaughter over there, when the previous equipment was still in place. She was going up and down the slide, late afternoon, and another father came over and brought his little boy, and the little boy came over and just stood there and stared at her the whole time. And so I messaged her father, my son, and I said, "Well, I have a husband for her. The wedding's in about 20 years." All took place right in the same spot, and this takes it to a whole different level, so thank you.
Yeah, the comments, inclusivity is great. I love the color scheming and see what you did with the, you know, getting transitioning from the real materials, but getting more durable stuff. I have a question about the trees, though. Wouldn't it be faster and cheaper for you just to cut down all the trees and start from a blank slate? Can you explain your rationale for keeping all these trees?
This is a tongue-in-cheek question. You do know.
I want him to give a real, I want him to give a real answer. Why don't you just cut down all these trees and start over and just give yourself a blank slate? Be faster and cheaper.
It's, I mean, the way we view it, the way we approach it, it's not necessarily the right thing to do. I mean, as best we can, we wanna try to preserve trees that are already providing shade today and then plant new trees that are gonna allow additional shade to take its place. So as we're thinking about, we're not thinking about, you know, we're thinking about how do we provide you an experience that is gonna be pleasant day one, but also thinking about, you know, how do we think about the space being experienced 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now? So what we're trying to do is limit our disturbance, maintain our footprint, that improves our stormwater management. So there's existing root capabilities of, you know, the existing root systems within soil. Certainly, I could cut a tree down and plant a new one in its place, and it'd probably make my life easier to work around it. But when you're thinking about all this peripheral edge of the site, if we can maintain that, the root structure of that forest is tremendously impactful to the longevity of the site, the performance, how it, how the site naturally addresses stormwater management, runoff, habitat. There's any number of reasons why we really wanted to, whatever we can, to protect as much woodland canopy as we can.
Sounds like you're saying keeping existing canopy is better than replanting.
Yes, if we can keep existing canopy, great. If we can plant to augment that, even better, because we're thinking about the transition of old to new. There is a lifespan on tree, there is a lifespan on tree material, on tree plants, trees and plants, but if we can keep existing, provide as much protection, improve its capability to, you know, live its long, healthy lifespan that it's intended to and it's in natural conditions would, and then plant plants that are going to supplement that planting so that as old ones die out, new ones are already there and have had the time to grow up.
And by preserving that internal canopy, you're also increasing the usability of the park by keeping the temperature down.
Tremendously. I mean, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, you know, it creates shade, it creates comfort. There's any number of reasons. I mean, it, it, it just makes for a much more inviting experience. It encourages habitat that may be there today to hang around. Clearcutting, you know, really puts sort of a scar on the landscape, you know, from some perspective, it could be, it could be viewed sort of as scars on the landscape. So what we're really trying to do is preserve as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your presentation. It's a park that is a long time coming, because I remember when we didn't have inclusive parks in Garner, and we were working diligently, probably over a decade ago, to get an inclusive park, which we did, were able to get a small one in, but to see this one come in with the surfaces where wheelchairs can be used, and not only children, but there are also adults who can use the same parks as the kids, which is, I believe is a great thing for all, all to be, to benefit from, and I like the park, I really do.
Thank you all. Yeah, absolutely great work on this. I'm sure you know that historically, that area had been known as the natural park with lots of wooden kind of seesaws and all kind of stuff, as compared to the modern playground over there with all the red metal things on the other side of White Deer Park. Yeah, a dozen years ago, I was taking my three-year-old granddaughter over there, and then her little brother after that, and you've really maintained the natural feel, the natural look. It's not just a playground. It's a wonderland. There's features, there's stuff. Excellent job, very exciting, very exciting.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you. And that being said, this is not a public hearing, but if there's anyone else who needs to speak about this, speak now or you can speak next time. It's not forever holding peace. This is an ongoing project. Anybody else who wants to speak to this? If not, then our mission here tonight is to see if we could get a motion to approve this design, so the Parks and Recreation Department can move ahead with planning, budgeting, implementation steps. And what was, so, that being said, is there, is there a motion to approve this design?
Second.
Ms. Behringer moves, and Mr. Matthews seconds. That being said, all in favor of approving this design, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none is unanimous. Thank you again for a great job. Full speed ahead. Can't wait to go there and watch some kids play.
Thank you all.
Okay, item number two on you and older business is kind of similar in the way that it's a plan, it's a going to comprehensive plan, pedestrian plan, that we'll hear some details on, starting with Mr. Trezenberg, and then we'll see where to go from there.
So in my next life, I wanna be a park planner, that's for sure. So I don't have a formal presentation for you on the pedestrian plan. I do know that it has been some time since you all have seen it, but the last time you saw it, we did have it here at, for public hearing and referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. They dove into it over the course, I think, of two meetings and came up with some modest recommendations, just for some things to be added, and those were, those were able to be accommodated by the consulting team fairly easily, even though they had wrapped up their contract with NCDOT. Some of, there were a few things that delayed us in getting back to you, namely that NCDOT, the person who was in charge of this program and their Integrated Mobility Division, had left and taken another position. So it took a little bit just to get concurrence that they were okay with those additions being made. And then additionally, the consulting team, one of, one of the two primary folks, also moved on to another job. But it is back before you, again, largely just as it was with those few minor modifications from the Planning Commission. They noted that they would like to have some language, basically, that just spoke to the benefits of looking at green stormwater infrastructure along the pedestrian network, flexibility in some of the buffer widths that were in the diagrams, as well as also kind of in the same vein of having some language to promote green stormwater infrastructure, also to promote public art. So those things were added in to lend some support to those kind of efforts where we can incorporate them. And, and so that's for you, before you tonight for, for adoption. Again, by having something on the books, this will help us in our application capabilities for grants and other things going forward. And again, it is a plan, and it is something that can be amended from time to time, once adopted, and I would envision that this plan would feed into our more comprehensive transportation plan update that we have scheduled for the coming fiscal year, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Questions, comments from council? Mr. Vance?
I have no questions.
Mr. Behringer?
I have a question about, on page 152, it talks about action steps and plans, and it says establish a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, or expand the Parks and Rec Committee to guide plan implementation. What is the sort of plan, the recommendation for setting that up as being a body to update this plan?
So that, I mean, that's something that you could look at specifically charging an existing commission with. I've seen it in some jurisdictions where that's just been charged to the Planning Commission, depending on who had the, who had the larger kind of load to bear. Some places, I have also seen it with Parks and Rec. When I started my career in Burlington, they actually did have a separate bicycle and pedestrian commission that was just focused on that. So choices are really up to you as to how you would like to do that. I don't think they wanted to pigeonhole you into one, one opportunity.
Yeah, 'cause the only reason I bring it up is it's in the implementation plan, and I think there needs to be a method, and no pun intended, vehicle for making changes to the plan. I think a different input at different times, incorporate into the plan, in more informal pedestrian networks that exist primarily in older neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. So people who are using those roads as means to get to sidewalks and that will never get sidewalks. And I see some mention of it in here, like on page 60 and 61, where it talks about how the lack of sidewalks makes it dangerous to get to schools and walk to schools, but I don't really see any recommendations or policy recommendations for making those old neighborhoods safe or safer. And I know that kind of can go in line with some of the traffic calming and things like that, but I just know in a lot of older neighborhoods, they just have informal walkways. I think there are also some potential opportunities for school paths that don't go through along streets. I think woodland is a good example, where you may be able to find a pedestrian route to Vandora Springs through, without getting on any major streets. So I think there's sort of an omission in the plan on the safety of older neighborhoods. I think otherwise, the plan is great for laying out opportunities for us and for funding and let's move forward, but I think we will also wanna in short order make a decision on where which bodies making recommendations to update the plan, just so we can have the, a place to know where to have those conversations and get language and policy recommendations from. So I don't know if we need to make that decision tonight, but it is in the action steps in the, in the plan, so I wouldn't want that to sit out there unacted upon for too long, so. But thank you and appreciate all the members of the Advisory Board that spent the time on it. It's been years and years, and it's a lot of work, but it's a good, good document to work from, for sure.
Excellent. Well, if there are no further questions or no further speakers or comments, I'll see if a council member wants to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-2574.
Slow move.
A motion by Mr. Vance is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of passing this resolution, adopting this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Trezenberg, and everyone who has worked on this. This is great, a great step, another great step.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it'd be helpful for staff to come back to council in the next several months with a recommendation as to which body would be best to kind of house that. Probably starting another advisory board is not the most recommended option, but just knowing where that's gonna live would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good observation. A work in progress. Excellent. And we move right along to committee reports. Which council members want to make a report from their committee assignment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm making one for the HR department.
Yes.
We just wanna say that we have started the interview process for the various positions that are currently vacant and will be vacant, and we'll continue on with that process throughout this month and the month of May, and hopefully be able to make a decision, is it June, around June timeframe? Around the June timeframe, be able to make decisions to fill those vacancies that are coming forth.
That's also an ongoing project.
Yes, sir. Ongoing.
And the, any other committee reports? Committee reports? Okay, let's move to manager reports, and I know we have some of those.
We do. Mayor, thank you. First before the council this evening is the Quarterly Capital Project Status Report. I'd like to invite our Engineering Director, Leah Harrison, to the podium to give you the quarterly report. The report that's included in your agenda for this evening, you'll notice, is a different format and style of the report than you've seen in the past. I just wanna recognize Leah and her staff for working on this new format. It provides a high-level view of the projects we have ongoing and provides a nice visual for those looking at the report to get a sense as to where we are in the process for the report. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Leah to let her sort of walk you through and explain not only the new format, but also highlight a few of the projects. So Leah?
Perfect, thank you, Jody, and thank you, council. And Mr. Mayor, I know you've had a busy night, so I will not keep you forever, but it's the most exciting night of the quarter, Capital Project Update Night, right? Like Jody mentioned, we have updated the format, so they made me take off my utilitarian engineer hat for a minute and make it pretty, so I tried. We're really just trying to find a better way to communicate project statuses to y'all and to the public so that it's easier to understand and easier to see what's going on at a glance. So the overall format has changed. One of the main things you'll see is the addition of the project status meter. The green, yellow, red should be pretty familiar. We tried to work a stoplight into it because it was sort of punny and fun, but it just didn't look right, so. Overall, the green just indicates that a project is, is overall on track, so we really don't have any major concerns, just moving forward as we normally would. On the opposite side, red is obviously, there's some, there's some issue, so, you know... So, you know, for example, when we ran into issues with Joan Sausage Road last year and going, you know, wildly out of budget and we had a lot of concerns, that was a red moment for that project. Yellow is somewhere in between. So we have, you know, projects that there's no major issue, they're not necessarily out of budget right now, but maybe there's some reason that we just feel like it needs to be more closely monitored because it has potential to, to be over budget or off schedule or something of that nature. So that's the holistic view we're looking at now. So hopefully at a glance, you can get an idea of where these projects stand. Real quickly, I wanted to point out one thing. I'm going to go just to our Town of Garner website here so that you all and also probably more importantly, the public knows where they can find this information if they need it. On the Town of Garner website, under Departments and the Engineering Department, we have this report linked in a couple of different places. So with, on the first page of the engineering site, we have the What's New and Quick Links, and it is Project Status Report linked here. We'll update that at the same time we, we update it for you quarterly. Also, within the Capital Improvement Program section of our website, on that landing page, there is a link to the Project Status Report here also. It's the same document, just linked in a couple of places. Here we also have a link to the Capital Improvement Program map, which is something that we are working on updating right now, working with our GIS specialist. So it, it exists, but it, it needs some updating. The idea beating, being to have something similar to what you have for the Development Activity Map that, that shows all the capital projects and the status of each one. Also on this page, you do have links to a page for each of our active projects with more information. So just, just to point people in the right direction if they're looking for anything. We will not go through this report word for word because I know y'all can look at it on your own. But I want to highlight a few things for you and then if you have any questions about anything else, of course, we can talk about them as we go. Now, so the first section we have is transportation. A couple of major highlights on transportation projects. As you recall, Joan Sausage Road, we re-scoped to really limit the work to the east side of the road and the intersection at this time and leaving a lot of the work on the western side of Joan Sausage for a future project due to the amount of right-of-way impacts and well-onseptic impacts that we would have. And we just received the 65% plans for that. So that's a good, good milestone for us to move that, that project forward in addition to receiving the LAP funding that, that we received for that. See what else is moving down? Another one, it's been a long time coming. White Oak Roundabout, we hopefully are finally getting close. We are hopeful for a May bidding, which would put us at a June bid opening likely. So possibly late summer, starting construction. We just received back a few more comments from NC DOT. So we're kind of, we're doing the back and forth with them a little bit right now to finish it up. But that is, that is getting close and the utilities are being relocated in that area so that they are, that is complete ahead of our getting out there to work.
Question in reference to the roundabout, in reference to the, the properties that were going through the, the acquisition process?
Yes.
Is that been fulfilled? Okay.
Yes, all the, all the acquisition on that is completed, so we are good to go. Moving to stormwater, the Forest Ridge Road pipelining repair, that is a mouthful. But that project is going to start around the first of May. Notice to proceed will be May 1st. We'll probably actually see construction happening around May 6th, the next week. So that project is at Buck Branch on Forest Ridge Road. We will be lining the culvert, similar to what we did at Junction Boulevard, to make sure that it lasts longer and then installing headwalls and, and stabilizing the banks of the stream and downstream. So that will be our next project to be starting construction.
That's the one right by the high school?
Yes. Yeah, we don't anticipate needing any road closures for that. They may have to be in part of the road, but as long as they, they should be able to keep enough open to keep traffic open. Since we're not, we're not having to open cut the pavement or anything, it's all work in the stream. And then we have the Stormwater Inventory and Assessment underway. Notable thing here is we are getting ready to start the fieldwork for that. So there will be surveyors out and about poking in, looking in storm drains and, and manholes and taking a look at things. They will all have identification on their trucks that says that they are there to perform work for the Town of Garner Stormwater Inventory and Assessment. They, they are putting out door hangers and they have cars sent out that have contact information for us and a link to the web, to the project website. So if there are any questions that any of you receive, feel free to point them our way, but we have tried to make sure that they identify themselves well so that everyone knows what they're out there doing. Moving to parks projects, we all know that Parks and Rec has a, a lot of different things going on. You heard about some of them tonight. A couple other notable items. The Garner Rec Park improvements have been completed. So that project replaced the existing playground surface with a port-in-place rubber safety surface, and that is complete. White Deer Park improvements, you got an update on tonight. So as you saw, that one is moving along well. Jurgen Park is one, a notable item here. This has been submitted to the town for development review. So our capital projects also go through our development review process. So this one has now been submitted via our new development review portal and we are reviewing it from a development perspective there. Moving to facility projects. The Town Hall Annex is officially out to bid. That bid opened today, it is posted on our website. That project, we actually have two different contracts out to bid related to that. One is to demo the former annex building and some of the gravel that is in the little circular area in front of there. With the Town Hall Annex project, because we already needed that building and some of that gravel to eventually be gone for the site work, we're going to remove it so that we're not adding additional impervious surface to the site so that there's an offset and we're not having to provide additional stormwater control measures for the, the new site work that we'll be doing. So that is out to bid as a project. And then the renovation of the Town Hall Annex Building itself has just gone out to bid today. So we are looking at starting construction on both of those within the next couple of months. Then the last page of your report summarizes NC DOT-led projects that we have in Garner currently, which is quite a few. The most notable probably being the NC 50 Bridge at US 70, which finally was let today. It's a good day. So for those who don't get the privilege of working with NC DOT terminology every day, like some of us do, the let date is something that they use frequently that the rest of us usually don't, but that's the day that they open the bids. So when we put something out to bid and then we receive them back and, and open them, that's what the let date is. I'm told that this project will be ready to have what we would consider a notice to proceed or a go-ahead for the contractor around May 29th. So we should be seeing movement on that pretty soon. That project is expected to last approximately 30 months for construction, but it is a detour-in-place project, so they will not be closing the existing bridge during construction. Traffic will be maintained. A couple other things that I did not get on this report regarding NC DOT, but just heard about recently, they have recently done resurfacing on Spring Drive and Claymore. If anyone has had questions about that, for some reason, they were doing the resurfacing at midnight, maybe? Really late at night, they had resurfacing going on out there. So we had some questions to respond to about that. They also have Wake Academy Drive, Thompson Road and Middle Road on their list to resurface. So those will be coming up as well. And then the, the other project that I just heard about today with a kickoff on May 8th is a project related to the signal timing along Timber Drive. So DOT will be doing a project to analyze the signal timing of all the signals on Timber Drive collectively and will be involved in that kickoff at the beginning of May. What are your highlights for today? I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
It was on Spring Drive, they apparently that's going to be striped differently with bike lanes and so forth because that's what it looked like to me with the dots, not the dots, the little strips for them to come in and put the permanent markings in.
Right.
Apparently will be on-street parking and then the bike lane and then the two lanes of traffic. I got a question. I ask this every time I see this. The Vandoor Springs Road Railroad, construct grade separation. I still want to know what kind of grade separation and how that's going to be done. That's just amazing, amazing thing considering that the subdivision was approved.
Yeah. I've heard there are no more specific plans about that. It seems to stay on the list, but I don't know that there's any, any work really occurring on it, so.
See it, my, like, knowing the distance that's needed, how in the world is that going to happen? Because you're not going to build a railroad bridge over the road, we know that. Okay, thank you. I was just, I saw them and I've heard you say that before and I thought, well, gosh, it's on the plan again.
Yeah, it, it is still there and the, the Vandoor Springs Bridge over 70 is also there now. So I'm not sure if maybe as that design progresses, it might shed more light on the other piece because those two are right next to each other.
And that, that is moving forward, that, with the?
The Vandoor Springs Bridge?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, they, they have it right now scheduled for let in 2027, which is not, it's not too far off.
A reconfiguration of that intersection too, because I know they don't build intersections quite like that anymore.
Yeah, it'll be, it's still on the stage where they're evaluating alternatives. We've looked at a def, a couple of different alternatives with them, including, which I, I think was looked at on the 50 Bridge as well, using roundabouts instead of using the traditional stigmatized intersections on either side of the bridge. The downside to the roundabout usually is it takes up a lot more space. So in a, in a place where you don't have a lot of space to work with, the impacts are a lot higher. There's also a lot of challenges with the vertical grade in, on that bridge. The, the bridge will actually have to be raised because the clearance is now higher per DOC standards. So the new bridge will be higher, which means that if you can picture, you know, coming from this direction up that bridge now, it's already pretty steep. So we'll be looking at even a, a steeper incline, which makes the, the roundabouts difficult.
Thank you.
Sure.
And since it's early, we've got a couple hours. Could you explain all this about Creech Road to us in, in detail, in fashion? This is good information. I'm, that's good information. You don't need to spend two hours talking about it tonight.
I don't think anyone wants to hear that, but, but yeah. We can, you know, certainly pull out some of the recommendations that we looked at in that report. And we, we've looked at some preliminary cost estimates, you know, just really high level for those. So I think that might be a logical next place to have our conversations is which, which of those are going to be more feasible and what are we looking at cost-wise and where can we pull in involvement from other parties as well.
That really helped us crystallize our thinking quite a bit, so that was extremely, extremely helpful. Thank you very much.
Quick question. On Buffalo Road today, this morning, there've been a lot of big trucks doing drilling and all kinds of stuff. Everybody said, what's that all about? I said, I'll find out tonight. So can you share anything on that?
Buffalo Road in the area where the Greenway will be?
For bridges all the way up to the roundabout, there's some drilling and staking and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't want to misspeak, but they may be doing, so associated with the, the Greenway design that we're working on, we are doing some borings to look at infiltration of the soil, which would allow us for, to potentially do like some green stormwater infrastructure measures along the roundabout instead of doing the traditional inlet and pipe and discharge. We're, we're making an effort to maybe treat in place and, and provide some more natural green stormwater infrastructure, but we need that infiltration, those infiltration numbers, so.
That's good news and thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to again thank Leah and the engineering team for putting together this new report. It's a great tool to be able to share information with council. It's a great tool to be able to share information and updates with the community in a really easy-to-read format. And of course, if those, if, if residents or council members want additional detail, that information can be available on the website as well. So just want to acknowledge the work and effort they put into this new format and say thank you.
Right, Mayor, members of council, we are just full of reports this evening. Next is our Quarterly Financial Report. And I'll ask our Finance Director, David Beck, to review this, the Quarterly Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll present a few brief comments and highlights of the report and then open it up to questions you all may have. Just wanted to say that if you look at the report and the memo, a couple of things stand out. One is, you know, we're, we're in good shape overall financially, revenues, you know, are on target. Particularly with revenues, I wanted to point out a couple of things. Property taxes is very strong. Of course, that's our largest revenue stream and most critical to the town. And there's a couple of factors that play into that, that, that help out the town overall with strong property tax collections. One of those is that the citizens of Garner are very good about paying their taxes on time. I've worked in other communities where that wasn't always the case. But here, we have folks who come in even before the tax bills for the new year go out and start making payments towards their taxes. So even though that's not always a pleasant thing for folks to do, we're very fortunate that our citizens do take that responsibility seriously and pay those taxes on time. It really helps benefit the town to continue to provide the services that we do to the citizens. And the second is our relationship with the Wake County Tax Administration Office. They do an excellent job levying the taxes and collecting them on our behalf. And so that's a very beneficial relationship for us. And I commend the staff, Marcus and all of his folks, for the job they do for the town. So property taxes is very good this year. Sales tax is another strong and important revenue for the town. We are starting to see sales tax sort of back down from the historical year-over-year, month-over-month growth we saw during COVID and just sort of unprecedented growth with sales taxes. Kind of normalizing now, coming back down to historical year-over-year growth numbers, but still positive. We're still, it's still growing, but it's growing much slower than it has been over the last couple of years. Interest earnings are still high for the town on our invested idle funds. If you saw, you know, some of the national reports this week, it appears we're going to stay in a fairly high interest rate environment for the time being. So we will benefit from that with our invested funds, our, you know, bond proceeds and things that we are drawing interest on that will accumulate more funds for those projects in the future and also our general fund monies that are accruing interest as well. One of the reports included is the one-time funding tracker, which is just the ARPA funding at this point. I did want to point out that we've added a column to that to, to signify how the town and, and its partners have been able to leverage those dollars and multiply the value of those ARPA dollars that we've contributed towards projects. So we'll continue to update that column as additional projects come online and folks are able to, to use that funding in additional ways. And on the expenditure side, just wanted to point out things are, you know, on track with, with the budget. We've paid most of our sort of one-time annual expenditures for the year. Things like property liability insurance, most of our debt service. So from this point forward through the end of the fiscal year, it's mainly the routine cost of doing business with payroll costs and other, you know, operating costs that we'll be having to cover the rest of the fiscal year. But again, we're, we're in good shape financially at this point in the fiscal year and I expect we'll wind up that way as we go through this last quarter of the fiscal year as well. So with that, I'll end my comments and be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Great information. Any questions for Mr. Beck?
Okay, thank you.
And finally, certainly last but not least, is our Monthly Talk of the Town Report. I've asked Assistant Manager Hodges to provide an overview of the Talk of the Town Report for council this evening, and so I'll turn it over to-
for council this evening and so I'll turn it over to John.
Hey, thanks, Ms. Miller. Good evening, council and staff. The report is in your packet there. Just highlight a few things. The Duke Energy Street Light on White Oak that's been mentioned, we did at least, we've gotten an acknowledgement back that it is in their system, so I don't have a, an update since that time, but it, it has been done. Well, very good, Ms. Behringer, so you had a better, a more current update. We heard a couple of things recently from council that we're in research mode on, so the fee in lieu of Parkland dedication review, there's some work that, that the attorney is going to be producing to get everyone started on the same page with that. Similarly with the speed limit reduction on Timber Drive that Mr. Dellinger mentioned, there's some preliminary work that staff needs to do to assess the situation, to understand what our odds would be of submitting that to DOT, but that has been heard and documented. Avenues at White Oak, thank you to Mr. Pageant, who coordinated the efforts of all the Development Services Department and put together a consolidated complaint package for things that had to do with engineering inspections and planning for the situations that have been mentioned there. And that was sent last week to both the developer of the project, who still has some closeout items in our opinion, as well as the HOA. So we're awaiting responses to those. As of earlier tonight, we had not received any responses. Jürgen Park, C-MAR Construction Manager at Risk Process has started and the, C-MAR has started advertising their pre-qualification process for Jürgen Park. We wanted to mention this because this is the first significant project where the town has used the C-MAR process and we're very excited about the opportunities it provides us. And one of those that you've been heard before about through that process is it allows the, the pre-qualification of folks that are participating in the project. So it really takes a different approach to how projects get built, but one that we think will, will pay off well for us in the long run. The note on Jessup Drive is a, is a fairly old case that some of you may have had folks reach out to you about and we just wanted to provide an update. This continued work going on, some commitments that were made by the property owner and staff is working with them to ensure that those commitments are made. Lastly, the homeless encampment on 401 and 70. Your, in your report here, shortly after producing this report for the packet, manager Miller sent out an update to you all, I believe, that the letter from DOT that had been awaited has been sent out to Raleigh. Raleigh received that. Raleigh posted some notices on the property early this week with the notice of when action would likely start being taking place on trespassing. So we believe that all the pieces are in place now. Raleigh, it looks like, is being allowed by DOT to make a pretty short window of time to make the final responses that they require as a part of their policy. And so additional action will begin being taken next week. So any questions about any of those updates before we move on to statistics?
Regarding the avenue at White Oak entrance, they did cut the grass either yesterday afternoon or this morning. It did get cut.
Okay, great.
So at least that part looks better.
Thank you. You have your statistics also for the Garner Info App and you see there the types of cases that we're dealing with and we're pretty consistent with the, the progress that is being made on all those cases. I will say that this is likely the last month that your tall grass and reeds will be, and weeds will be only one of those reports. We are entering tall grass season and Mr. Pageant asked that we just remind council and the public that given that, you will start seeing a new tool or a tool we rolled out late at the end of grass season last year, but it are these yellow door hangers that are printed in both English and in Spanish. And these are going to be used by our enforcement teams when they're out and identify an issue. It lets them check off the issues that are being identified and ask folks to contact our offices. And it gets a step ahead, we think, of the way that we have in the past been reacting to situations that come up. So be on the lookout for this for our, those watching at home. We wanted you to be aware as well, so if you see a yellow door hanger on your property or a neighbor's property or maybe a property that you own but aren't residing in, you at least know we're trying to draw your attention to the fact that we do have something that we need your attention on. There's copies of that up here if council members care to have one of these so that you can share that with, with neighbors, friends, constituents. There's extra copies up here tonight, but we want to draw that to your attention on behalf of Mr. Pageant and his team. And then lastly, we have our development statistics. And as you see in those, we continue to have fairly record-breaking numbers, especially in terms of the inspection numbers that our inspection team is producing. I'm very proud of our team to be able to report that even though these numbers are record-breaking numbers, we're responding to 100% of the requests for inspections next day. The, we are required to do that within two days and the team is doing that 100% of those with next-day response right now. So while we've got a lot of work on us, very proud of that team for keeping up with that work and appreciate all the support of all the rest of the Development Services team in helping them keep those statistics and these other ones that you see moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Lot of good information. Graphic presentations are always helpful. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the reports for this evening. Certainly staff is available to answer any additional questions that council may have.
Looks like maybe attorney reports.
No report tonight.
Okay. And can the council say the same thing? Are we, are any more reports from council, seriously?
Short ones. I'd just like to say that I'm noticing in, in areas of town, the community pride with citizens out with trash bags and picking up trash in within the corridors, which is greatly appreciated, just to see that type of community pride taking place in Garner. I know it's been there, but I'm seeing it more evident now than I have before. One area that I've noticed of possible concern, little trash beginning to, to collect, that is on Evolve, Evolve Drive where the proposed Bojangles is going in. Appears that someone just dumped some trash, a box, a big box out there with some trash in it. It's been sitting there for a while that, that needs to be removed. And, and on the area of Vandoor Springs, I have several addresses I need to give to staff at homes of concern. They have a number of disabled cars and other items beginning to pile up in their yards and neighbors are getting concerned about the unsightliness of those two properties. I will give those addresses to the, to the staff. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Any other reports, comments from that being the case?
I have a question, a clarification question on traffic counts. This is a Jeff and John question. We've talked before about there not being traffic counts on New Bethel and then some other roads down in that area. When you go to the DOT annual average map, they've got little nodes, but then they also have the entire road. And it, am I correct in they don't, they're not doing measurements on New Bethel, Hebron Church, Bryan Road, Simpkin Road? And if it's not in that list, that they're not collecting data there anymore?
That's my understanding. If, if there's, if there's a dot in the node, if they've collected data in the past, it would show up there. But that's been my understanding that they're not. But their maintenance division, if there's a coloring of the actual roadway, they are producing an estimate of some kind.
So looking at this map, they collected traffic data on New Bethel from 2003 and stopped in 2015. Hebron Church, 2003, they stopped in 2011. Bryan Road, 2003, stopped in 2015. Simpkin Road, 2003, stopped 2015. Saul's in 1010 falls in that category too. We need to get DOT out there measuring the traffic. We've not collected traffic counts out there in 10 years in the highest growing parts of the town.
I think that coincided incidentally with the opening of the Clayton bypass. I think when New Bethel actually connected through, they were more proactive about that. And I think once the bypass was built, but between me and Leah, we'll, we'll see if we can find out some more information about what their intent is.
How can we get them out there collecting that data again? Because it's interesting when you start looking at the data too. White Oak is at 31,000, which is the equivalent, oh, they're around White Oak Shopping Center, which is the equivalent of 70 and 401. So I'm just, I think it'd be helpful for us to make these more informed traffic estimates to, if they start collecting that information again. And I don't know if it, it would almost be helpful if we could start getting that information even sooner and get a snapshot because we're kind of flying in the dark when it comes to traffic counts on, on those roads. And I don't know if that's something we can contract out for somebody to come out and do in a couple of months and, and get a snapshot before DOT because they're really staggered and lag a couple of years. I don't know. I don't know if that's helpful, but.
We're looking at a town council project. We can take turns going around the day with a clicker.
Okay. So we have traffic counting equipment. We use it when we get traffic calming requests. The equipment that we have now is the tubes that go across the road, so it's a little limited on how wide of a road you can get. We actually just got from the company that our, our equipment is from, they sent us a trial of a different model, which uses radars instead of the tubes. So you still have a device on each side hooked to a pole of some sort, you know, light pole or whatever, wherever you can attach it, but it uses a radar going across instead of a physical tube counter. So we're going to set those up and use those near Bryan Road Elementary School because we've had some concerns there about the crossing. So we decided that was potentially a good place to try those out and, and see what capability they have. We don't, doing traffic counts on DOT hasn't been our usual because it's typically connected to streets that we can do traffic calming on if we need to. But certainly with the equipment and with DOT is okay, we, we could collect traffic counts and that, I mean, usually we leave them out for a week or so, but other than that, it's, it's pretty quick turnaround.
It'd be interesting to see your, your pilot efforts and there's some candidate roads out there. We're not getting any other information, so that would be, that'd be great.
Yeah, that might give us opportunity to look at different sizes of roads and, and things like that. So we'll, we'll let you know how Bryan Road goes once we get that done and go from there.
Thank you.
Dellinger, we can also, in addition to that preliminary work, we can also think about as we scope transportation plan, whether or not we want to think about ways to sup, by then we should probably have a more definitive answer from DOT about what we could expect. And then we might get add a scope to our transportation plan about some additional data collection that we might, we might would like to benchmark areas that we can't go out and do immediately.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay, great. Good reports. Great participation by everyone. I can't thank all of you enough for what you're doing for us. I can't thank the council members for their patience and perseverance in working through some very challenging issues we had this evening. But I think the, the outcome was good. The participation from our citizens was great. A successful meeting, so successful, I think we should go to a closed session for some other, for another couple of hours. Is there a motion to move to a closed session?
Pursuit NC General Statute, Section 143 dot 318 dot 11, Pren A, Pren 3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
If I may, before, before you vote on that, the first one regarding litigation would also be for subsection A5 with respect to property acquisition. And then I have requested a second closed session pursuant to subsection A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
That's what Phil meant.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a second to the joint combined motion that was made?
Yes.
Yes, there was a second by Ms. Behringer. Okay, all in favor of moving to a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? We will move to a closed session, but y'all wait around. We'll be right back in a couple of hours. Thanks for being with us. Thanks for being with us.
And there's our beep, we're live. And we've just returned from our closed session. And we're going to reopen our regular session here. And we're going to reopen our regular meeting after our closed session. And we'll get a report from our town attorney as to the contents of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the closed session under 143-138.1183, Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the closed session under 143-138.1183 to consult with the attorney regarding potential litigation and subsection A5 with respect to acquisition of property, council did vote to adopt resolution number 2024-2572 regarding the intent to acquire right-of-way and easements needed for construction of road improvements and installation of a traffic signal at the White Oak and Bryan Road intersection by either negotiated purchase or by eminent domain. With respect to the closed session under subsection A6 regarding personnel, town council did not make any decisions in that meeting.
Thank you very much for that report. If there's no other questions or comments or matters before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Matthews. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Hearing done. It passes unanimously. Our regular session is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and contributions.